Ms. Ms. Moberg? Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Get them one. I know they're on their way.
While you get studio ready, I'll just do roll call just to be sure that we have everybody and mics are operational. Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Ismohizer?
I'm here.
Ms. Tolan?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Darnak Kofax? Ms. Keys Gamara?
I'm here.
Ms. Corbett Sanders? Ms. McLaughlin, would you mind turning off your microphone, please?
My apologies.
Ms. Pakarski?
Good afternoon.
Ms. Omeish?
Hello, here.
Mr. Frisch?
Present.
Ms. Darnak Kofax? And Ms. Corbett Sanders? Are not with us just yet.
Dr. Anderson, I didn't hear you call Cohen. I'm sorry if I missed it.
No, you did not. I skipped your name. I apologize, Ms. Cohen. Are you present? Are you with us?
Well, those are two different things, but yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, so long as we have your body, your spirit may be later on. Okay, I think we're waiting for two more that we do not have at this time, but we are going to rock and roll and move ahead if studio is with us. Can you confirm, Ms. Moberg?
Studio is with us.
Okay, studio is with us. We do have to certify closed and act upon an action that took place in closed. Ms. Moberg, can you identify which is first on this certification of close or the action?
Certification.
So we will start there, thank you. In order to comply with section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on December 7, 2020, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt open meeting requirements. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. That is being moved by Ms. Omeish and seconded by, seconded by Mr. Frisch. All in favor? We have Ms. Omeish, Mr. Frisch, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Ismohizer, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. Darnak Kofax, can you also test your mic since I'm here with you?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Ms. Keys Gamara, Ms. Pakarski, and myself, and that will be 11, with Ms. Corbett Sanders away from the table. I see that has just joined. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you test your mic, please?
I'm here.
And do we want you, would you like to be added to the vote certifying closed?
You can add me to your vote. Positive.
That will be 12. Now we will move to certify action that was taken in a closed meeting on Friday, December 4. I will look for Mr. Frisch for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the board the contract for the Chief Operating Officer as discussed in closed meeting.
And this motion is seconded by Ms. Omeish?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, which is I moved that the Chairman of the School Board be authorized to execute on behalf of the board the contract for the Chief Operating Officer as discussed in closed meeting, please raise your hands at this time. We have Mr. Frisch, we have myself, we have Ms. Omeish, we have Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Ismohizer, Ms. Cohen, and that is seven. All against? All opposing the motion? See none? All abstaining? We have Ms. Keys Gamara, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. I did not record a vote for Ms. Pakarski.
I'm sorry, I was kicked out. You can put me, sorry, I'm the first, the first vote, thank you.
Thank you. So we have eight in favor of the motion and four against the motion. It will carry.
Four abstaining.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. We have eight in favor of the motion and four abstentions, zero against. I apologize. I will make sure I say it once more for the viewer in public. We have eight in favor of the motion and four abstentions. Thank you so much, everyone. I am just so accustomed to that one, too. I made an error there. At this time, it is 2:06. We are going to turn over the meeting to our managers, Mr. Frisch and Ms. Omeish of the work session. So Mr. Frisch and Ms. Omeish, please take it away. I know you have some things to set up for us.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. All right, folks. So just a reminder, keeping our eye on time here, given that we were scheduled to start at 1, I would encourage everyone to plan for that additional hour, so we will likely be concluding, I hope at 5, looks like closer to 5:15, given where we are. We're going to be presented with two plans today, as we shared in our email, which action is scheduled for on the 17th in our regular public meeting. So the objective today is really discussing our thinking around the pros and cons of the various plans and sharing any refinements we might have for the overall process, as well as commenting on the engagement plan that will be presented as a part of today's presentation, which was a follow-up to one of the next steps that board members presented before. Today, as we also shared in our email to everybody, we're going to be starting off by doing one-minute opening comments from each member to essentially answer the two-part question of what are your preliminary thoughts coming into this work session based on our prior work on this topic already, and what are you hoping to get out of today's conversation? So we'll go ahead and proceed just one minute, then we're going to move to staff for their presentation. So with that, we will start with Dr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Omeish. The two questions, what am I hoping to, I'm so sorry, can you please repeat those two questions?
No worries, no worries. What are your preliminary thoughts coming into the work session and what are you hoping to get out of today's conversation?
I'll be very quick, and then I will yield the rest of my time to my colleagues. I really want us to further the conversation we've been having, which is how to increase diversity to TJ as we, that's a conversation we have been having. What I'm hoping to get at this meeting is just additional information for consideration before the board makes its vote on the 17th. That's it for me. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Okay, welcome back to, you're welcome to pass.
All right, no, I'm so sorry. I couldn't get my video, I apologize. No, I, you know, am interested to hear more about giving more opportunities to more kids in our system to take advantage of all the amazing things that TJ offers. I also still am interested in hearing the case be made between the two options that are being presented, and also why some things were excluded that I know several board members, including myself, have advocated for, so I'll be looking for that.
Great. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Ms. Darnak Kofax? All right, Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Sorry, the video is very slow today for some reason. And so very quickly, yes, I hope to, I am anxious to see more opportunities for more students. I will be asking questions on teacher recommendations and how they can be made part of this process. I want to talk more about exploring how mathematical aptitude will be evaluated. And also, I do not think, as you know, at an earlier meeting in November, I made statements about all the things, the pathways that we needed to develop for TJ, strengthening access of all of this advanced education, and I believe these were symptoms. I believe we absolutely need an analysis of our math and science curriculum offering in elementary and middle school and how this plays out in TJ. So those are my comments for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Ditto, Ms. Darnak Kofax. The video is moving really slow today. Like my colleagues, I'm interested in hearing more about and asking questions about the new option being presented to the board, which we've had, you know, some, I've had some discussions with staff about. And also, you know, the thinking that went into one criteria versus another. And because we've not done this before, there's very limited ability to kind of predict what the outcome will be, so I have some questions about thinking through that as well in comparison to the current proposal and the previous proposal, which at least we had modeling around. So I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Keys Gamara?
It'd be nice to have a heads up that we are doing it this way, but okay, I'll roll with it, Ms. Omeish.
It was in the email, but go ahead.
We get lots of emails. So I will say I am looking forward to having this discussion because for some time I've been trying to figure out where the common ground is for all of us. I did circulate some language earlier. I want my board members to know that I'm working on some revisions. Some of that language actually came from the Loudoun County decision, and that perhaps may not be the best way to go, and so some of that will be edited out. But I'm hoping that we can coalesce around some common goals to send our community a clear message where this board is looking for guidance or how we are providing guidance to our superintendent. I also think it is extremely important that we leave the door open for our oncoming new Equity, Chief of Equity hiry that will be coming on in January. It is my presumption that she has expertise and we need that guidance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Just getting my video up. So I'm absolutely looking forward to all of you about how we refine the proposals from the superintendent. I believe wholeheartedly that we've got to increase access of opportunity for our students and have better representation. I believe our nation's most selective universities in the country have shown how you can have high-achieving universities with a highly diverse population, and for too long TJ hasn't reflected that. However, I do have concerns about the academic metrics that the superintendent has proposed, and I do also strongly believe that our teachers are going to be a very important voice for hearing from them what they observe from students. So I again hope that we will have a robust data-driven conversation and that we set up our students and our community for success when we look at TJ being one of the nation's and world-recognized high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin.
Thank you. As far as my preliminary thoughts coming into today is to focus on what our action seeks to do, and what it seeks to do is to be more reflective of our community, have TJ be more reflective in our community. You know, TJ students say that there's a problem, and families see this, too, that there's a lack of diversity, and it detracts from students' ability to achieve their full potential. So I disagree with those who say that TJ will suffer and falter. Students are already suffering, and to do nothing makes us complicit in that suffering. So I admire the personal journey that many parents have shared with the board about individual or family sacrifice to achieve their success here, and those are truths. I think at this time, for our population now, it is right that FCPS refreshes the process of how we identify exceptional students, and that includes removing barriers in the admissions process in part. And for today, I'm hoping to understand where each of my colleagues is in this decision-making so that we can have a clear plan for our decision-making next. Thank you. That was my timer.
Perfect, perfect timing. Ms. Pakarski?
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking forward to the conversation just with my colleagues about, you know, ensuring access to opportunity and creating a diverse learning environment, which we know is good for all learners and have benefits for all learners in every one of our schools. And I just have many questions about how we're going to get there, so looking forward to hearing not only our opinions, but the superintendent's opinions regarding the differences between the approaches and ensuring that we maintain a very high standard, academic standard at TJ, which is, I believe, all of ours goal for all of our students, so thank you.
Ms. Ismohizer?
Thank you. Sorry, the video again was very slow, so I'll go ahead and start talking while I'm up. I too am, you know, concerned about making sure that all of our students who have the aptitude and passion for TJ have the ability to access the enrichment in STEM education that TJ provides. I think it's important to make sure that we set all of our students up for success, both from the minute they come into our schools until the time that they may or may not choose to apply to TJ, they should be set up for success. So I'm particularly interested in the accountability measures and how we're going to measure not just the, you know, metrics in the white paper, but also really success of our students that we admit. And I also am really curious to know about the differences between the two. I think I'd like to hear about the voice of the teachers in this process, as when my colleagues mentioned when we talked about local norms, sometimes teachers recognize things that others don't, so I'm really interested to hear about the thoughts around that. I'd like to see what other school systems have been doing and what their outcomes have been, and I have wondered to know some good STEM assessment, because this school is for STEM, and to make sure that we keep in mind what the school's purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm happy to be here today to dive into this discussion. I have to admit, I'm coming in struggling a little bit, looking at all of the information and data around how a lottery can possibly give us what we're looking for as far as diversity, and also allow us to ensure that we can build a class of exceptional students that have the potential to succeed at TJ, but I'm here to listen. I wanted today to look at the best pieces of the input to this process for our students, especially want to advocate for teacher voice. I want to point out that students who most probably need letters of recommendation from teachers are the ones who do not have the strong parental advocacy, and those for whom a teacher can be their primary advocate, so I'd really like to talk more about that. Also interested in how we will be measuring aptitude in mathematics, and of course, want to be a part of the strategic conversation on all of our students. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'll come back to you.
Thank you so much. So I think we all agree that change is necessary, and that we would like to see greater representation at TJ from across the county and from across different socioeconomic groups. So what we're here today doing is we're talking about how we can create greater opportunities for access for exceptional students, no matter what zip code they live in. And I think we've made some strides in getting there, but we still have ways to go before this is fully blessed by this board. So I'd like to talk a little bit today about building on the access to opportunity and pathways that we talked about a few weeks ago. And I want to see how we can screen all students at the end of their elementary school years to determine how we can best provide the scaffolding of support and greater access to opportunities for these students going into middle school to support structure that will allow for more of them to see themselves attending TJ, because part of it is if we can see themselves, then they will actually pursue it. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and take my minutes, and then we'll get started. So preliminary thoughts. To me, the objective of making sure every kid can reach their potential and can have access to this opportunity is unapologetic, and I'm compromising. At the same time, I want to be open-minded coming into the conversation. I feel strongly about localizing opportunity, universalizing how we reach out to students, but I do look forward to hearing what staff have to share. I'm hoping to get out a way of rethinking merit and really evaluating what we have here and how it offers that. And then finally, in understanding what our next steps are going to be to gauge our effectiveness and whatever plans we do have, and how we can ensure that we're successful in the long term, not just in today's conversation. So with that, that's, I'm done with that piece of my remarks. I will direct my colleagues to make sure they look at the Office of Research and Strategic Improvements Report, which has been attached to today's meeting, and will turn it now to Mr. Smith for the presentation.
And actually, Ms. Omeish, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Braybrand to start us off, and then we will walk through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Ms. Omeish, and I'll be sharing several things, as will Mr. Smith and other members of his team that he will introduce when he begins to chat. I do want to thank this board and our community for all of their engagement around this very important issue for our community and for frankly, our Commonwealth of our country about access and opportunity for our students. And so here, we'd like to go ahead and put up our presentation for TJ admissions around expanding our talent search. If we can go to the very first slide, our agenda today, we're going to go back over background, key decisions, research and data, our final proposal, which has two options for you around TJ admissions, one being a hybrid merit lottery and the other a holistic review. This presentation will then talk a little bit about stakeholder engagement, our outreach and communication plan, and accountability metrics. And it will also share work that Ms. Omeish just referenced about the paper that we created from ORC in the TJ admissions office, and we'll be glad to take questions at the end. But our purpose today is to do all of this, share with you these two proposals, and we look forward to having you, after your feedback, select one of these two proposals to move forward as we begin admissions process for the upcoming TJ freshman class. One of the things we want to talk about and have talked about for some time is leading with equity at the center of all that we do. We know that equity and excellence can go hand in hand. They are not mutually exclusive, and we do want to continue to enhance diversity at TJ. We know that a diverse student body can enhance the overall educational experience for our students at TJ. We've talked with you before about our admissions process, which is what we're focused on today, our enhanced wraparound support for our students that already are at TJ and those that would be coming in, and the work that this board has talked about, Ms. Darnak Kofax shared a month or two ago on a resolution the board rallied around, which is about enhancing our pipeline. And this board just last week took action to support working with local norms, which is part of the steps the outside consultant recommended in enhancing our pipeline. So this board is taking action. I'm very pleased in partnering with you to move forward on the ideas our outside consultants have given us to continue to enhance equity in our school division. I'm going to turn it over now. I think Marty, Jeremy's going to go first for the next slide to give us the background. Is that right, Jeremy Schugert, our Director of Admissions at TJ?
That's right.
All right, Jeremy, take it away.
Thank you, everyone. Just a little bit of background on, for TJ. The school board has a policy and regulations that guide and dictate our admissions processes, as well as other elements to TJ as a regional governor's school. And over time, that policy has changed, but one of the key factors that has really, for the most part, stayed steady is what's here quoted in terms of demonstrated exceptional achievement, aptitude, commitment, intellectual curiosity, passion, creativity, and STEM. The mission has pretty well stayed the same for our students, and it really does come down to inspiring joy, putting forward a challenging learning environment at the school. And this even goes back as far as what we originally were able to share and had some questions about in terms of the founding of TJ. And at the bottom of the, of this particular page and slide, you can see some of those founding statements and part of the original charter that was founded back in the mid 1980s. And so while I'm not going to read each of those to you, you can see where we are today is still very much in line with the original founding of this school and how we're moving forward, and the goal here is to continue to be able to live up to these expectations.
Thanks, Jeremy. I want to show you just real quickly, previous proposals I had brought before the board. We can go to the next slide, please. Which was around the initial merit lottery that I shared, and then I shared with you at the last work session on TJ, the hybrid merit lottery, which kept the same application requirements, kept the lottery, but the 100 highest evaluated students would be offered a seat based on holistic review of their application. Both of these standards do, both of these proposals do have high standards, provide all eligible students an opportunity to demonstrate their own interests and qualifications through an individualized review of their academic accomplishments and other factors. And these were two of the previous proposals. As we focus on the work session today, if we go to the next slide, the key decisions are around two approaches for the school board to consider, the hybrid merit lottery with some revisions, and our staff will be going through some of those revisions, and a holistic review approach. And what we're looking for is board discussion and feedback, and ultimately, that would culminate in a vote to select the desired approach that we have scheduled later this month to select the process for the TJ class of 2025. I do want to say that we did reach consensus, this board did, from our recommendation to you earlier this fall, that the new admissions process would not have an application fee or, and would not have a test, really removing some barriers that have existed for our students in the TJ admissions process. We also got consensus from this board earlier to increase the capacity of the TJ incoming class, and we have added 50 slots to the incoming class this coming year. And there was consensus to bring this holistic admissions approach that did not have lottery as an option, and so we have the hybrid merit lottery with a few revisions and a holistic review approach. We have both of those for you today, and we'll be talking about them in more detail in some upcoming slides. Jeremy, you're going to talk a little bit about the research that we've done around our work since we last talked with the board and before?
Sorry, my video is a little slow as well. Yeah, so one of the things that we had done in terms of the process that we went through to research this was we did evaluate, and we have consistently evaluated schools that are similar in nature to TJ. Those elements are actually in the, in the research report that is associated with this. You can find some information on a section for research on page eight, along with an associated title, I'm sorry, table three, along with on page 37 and 38. there is a response to some of the previous next steps that were asked in previous board sessions. And so one of the things when we originally were bringing this forward was the questions of, of some comparison schools and what are their application processes like? And then in addition, looking at schools specifically that had lottery approaches and the success of those lottery approaches. Throughout the entire research paper, you can see sightings and notations about the literature review that we have conducted throughout that process. All of this was in reflection to what our policies and procedures are for the admissions process. Coupled with that was conversations that we held with some known experts from the university level. Dr. Genevieve Siegel-Holly from Virginia Commonwealth University, Dr. Dominic Baker, Southern Methodist University, previously at UVA, and Dr. Jonathan Plucker from Johns Hopkins, who also was working with us on the advanced academics. One of the big things that we were really focused in on was a lottery approach and looking at how that approach would be an impact to, you know, traditionally our underrepresented students and really kind of looking at the approaches that we're proposing here today and whether or not it would help us allow students who have been historically underrepresented have more of an opportunity to gain access to TJ. And they collectively said that yes, you know, making some of the change, making the changes that we're suggesting here would be a way to increase that. One of the other things that, that, you know, that was shared was specifically to a lottery, just as an example, was that what you're looking at is these are, and certainly you can see the elements of this in the research that was provided. A one-time approach is very different than when you run a series of models and a series of, of treatments. So you do have to be aware of that as we go through this. And, you know, generally speaking, they were, you know, they were very much in favor of looking at this as an approach to move forward. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So as we think about our guiding principles, we were charged with, from the community, from the board to consider a variety of factors as we develop the admissions process. Of course, I'm wanting to recognize those historical inequities that we've seen at TJ based on a variety of factors, while at the same time creating no new inequities for students. Of course, appropriately measuring student readiness or success at TJ and an opportunity to identify potential talent. Again, opening the door for more students to have access to the curriculum and environment at TJ. Removing those barriers in the admissions process is the way to do that, while at the same time maintaining high standards. And I think that as we've looked at this entire process, maintaining high standards has been at the heart of what we're doing, along with equity. And also feel that by increasing diversity for some of our underrepresented students at TJ, it would only serve to increase those standards at the school. Next slide. So now I'm going to take a moment to talk about the two proposals that we're bringing forward. One being, as Dr. Braybrand said, the hybrid merit lottery and the other holistic review. Next slide. So for these two proposals, we developed processes to enhance student merit. And we also created a way for us to take a holistic look at students, you know, based on a variety of factors. And we'll go through that particular process a bit later on. But at the end of those enhanced requirements and at the end of taking that holistic review, the board can consider one of the two options that we have here in yellow. Proposal one is the merit lottery, where we would offer the 100 seats to the highest evaluated students and then select the remaining 450 students using a lottery approach. And then the second proposal is that holistic review, where we would offer 550 seats to the highest evaluated students. And as I said, we'll talk a little bit more about how each of these processes work a bit later in the process. Next slide. So as we talk about enhanced merit, people have asked, what does that look like? What does enhanced merit look like for this particular process? So of course, we would want to identify students who exhibit those portrait of a graduate attributes and 21st century skills using a student portrait sheet. And of course, TJ being a science and math school, we would want those students who have a clear, strong aptitude for science and math and showing that aptitude through a problem solving essay. It's also important to note, we want to identify students who understand what it means to work in a rigorous and learn in a rigorous environment. So as we think about those students who achieve an unweighted GPA 3.5 in core classes with most of those courses being honors classes, it's important to note that these students are achieving this GPA while displaying that aptitude and being enrolled in Algebra I or a more advanced math course. And of course, these two items that we've bolded here are new since we presented this last time. We also want students who would demonstrate that strong preparation for TJ coursework by being enrolled in both math and science honors courses. And then additionally, for students who would want more rigor, we're looking for those students who would be enrolled in one additional honors course or a student being identified as a young scholar. Again, it's important to note that using this criteria would provide us a pool of students of about 4,300 students where we would personally invite those students to apply to TJ. And also know that we would provide those students an opportunity with a waiver for students who had that same strong passion, but perhaps weren't part of, of an honors course. And I'll let Jeremy talk a little bit later about the application process and how we'll be working with our school-based staff, our counselors, our teachers and our administrators to help guide students through the process. I also want to note that in our previous processes, we've had approximately 2,500 to 3,000 students apply to TJ. So looking at that initial invitation for 4,300 students would certainly expand the access for this unique school. Next slide. As we mentioned earlier, there are elements for the holistic review. Of course, we'd be looking at GPA for students. We've talked about the student portrait sheet. We've talked in several presentations about the problem solving essay. Additionally, we would be considering experience factors, unique factors that all students bring to the table and factors that may have led to students being underrepresented at TJ. And so those experience factors include students who are economically disadvantaged, those students who are English language learners, those students who are special education students, and those students who attend underrepresented schools. So as part of the entire process, those experience factors would be considered in addition to the strong merit that students show by applying to the, to TJ itself. We've also, as Dr. Braybrand said, expanded capacity to increase to a class of 550 students. While it's 50 students more than our previous capacity, in reality, it will add approximately 70 more students because historically, we've had about 480 students in the freshman class at TJ. And I'm going to let Jeremy talk about how this process unfolds through the pathway process, that regional pathway process that would bring students into the school.
Thank you, Marty.
And I do, I do want to go back to this slide here, just as a way to show those proposals once again. The hybrid merit lottery on the left, the holistic review on the right, showing that the top 100 would be offered admission regardless of pathway. The remaining 450 students would be chosen by random lottery. And those top 100 students in the hybrid merit lottery would not be counted toward those pathway caps. And again, Jeremy will explain that in just a bit. On the right side, the highest evaluated students would be offered admission, and those students would be selected by pathway until a particular cap is reached. Jeremy.
Next slide, please. So if we're looking at the two proposals in, in relation to the previous slide, proposal one, the hybrid merit lottery, is a two-part application, or well, not application process, but selection process. As Mr. Smith just mentioned, the top 100 students in terms of the strongest evaluations of their application would be offered admissions. That doesn't matter where they're coming from. They could be private school, public school, within FCPS's five regions or within one of the participating jurisdictions. Those students are all going to receive an offer regardless of the maximum number of students that are available to the schools. The second part of the selection process would come into play for the remaining 450 students. And as you can see here, displayed on the screen, is reflective of, of the balance of numbers that's remaining in each of these. Yes, and these are actually posted in the next steps as well. But each of these numbers are balanced out on a 70/30 model. 70% of the students that will be offered admissions through the 450 students will come from the five regions within Fairfax County. Each of those regions' numbers or caps, as they're put out, are based upon student enrollment in the, in the schools in which, eighth grade student enrollment in which the schools exist in those particular regions. For the participating jurisdictions, it's the same type of process. We're looking at 30% of the available seats to be divided based upon student representation. Thank you.
That is the halfway mark, just so you guys know, but keep going. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so for the participating jurisdictions, that number again is, is divided out for each of those jurisdictions based upon their eighth grade enrollment. Similarly, in proposal number two, is a full holistic review. So as, instead of just taking the top 100 evaluated students, we take the top 550 evaluated students. Still, this is based on that 70/30 model in terms of calculations for each of those regions. And you can see on the screen here how those regions actually work out and what those numbers are. And, and one thing, finally, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're clear is the 100 students from the hybrid lottery model that were selected first are not impacted in any of the regions. So it does not, does not take away from the numbers represented on the screen. Okay, next slide, please. One of the other things that was some questions and we wanted to share is we've had opportunities to be able to speak with a variety of different stakeholders. And what's listed here on the, on the screen in front of you is a number of the different stakeholders that we've had an opportunity to be able to discuss throughout time in terms of the approach and illicit feedback, concerns about particular students and student groups. And, you know, try to implement that process in and look at ways in which we can address those concerns within these two approaches. And so this is not a one-time type of thing. This, there will be continued conversations moving forward into the future and looking at the various stakeholders and, and different groups that are interested in the success of TJ. Move to the next slide, please.
Jeremy, before you go on, I would simply, I would simply add that some of the concerns and questions that school board members had did come up from our stakeholder groups as we engage them. And also some of the strengths of the different proposals were parroted by those groups as well.
Correct, absolutely. So the other, the next steps or another, I should say, another step in the process is student engagement, student outreach, parent engagement, parent outreach, and, and the variety of different communications. Now, this slide is very similar to previous slides that we have presented to the board that talks about what we're, what we do from an admissions standpoint in terms of, of that engagement and outreach and communications. Our intention is to be able to share information and send personal invitations and recruitment letters to all eligible students from a, within Fairfax County Public School. We've, we're able to identify those students and be able to send them. We've worked with our participating jurisdictions and talking and speaking with them about how we would identify the same types of students in their jurisdictions and how we can work with them so that they can also share that type of recruitment letters and information to those eligible students. In essence, we want to make sure that we're getting information in the hands of all those students. We're working on developing and providing virtual open houses. Certainly in this time with COVID and in the unknown of when we'll be back in schools, we want to be able to put something out there on the web so that that way students and families will be able to experience TJ from a virtual aspect. And additionally, we wanted to continue to reach out and work with liaison counselors, school counselors, parent liaisons, specifically for our underrepresented students in many of our underrepresented schools and have some additional targeted recruitment. So if you can go to the next slide, please. A lot of that has to do with working, particularly at the end piece, is working with engagement with parent liaisons, the PTA Diversity Committee, different alumni groups. We want to work with other areas and other groups within and without Fairfax County. So in working with the Equity Office, some of the areas that we were concerned with and some, some board members were concerned with is providing professional development for us, for our faculty and staff within, within FCPS, which would relate to, you know, consider additional professional development specifically to an equity focus for our advanced academics resource teachers, different counselors, particularly as they're counseling students as they move through the process with TJ as a high school option for these students. And then, and again, not limiting to these groups. Some of the other pieces that are not necessarily inherent inside of the classroom, but are also options and opportunities that we want to provide for our students and our families is a variety of different STEM activities, different showcases. And, and this work is partnered with the school, with local government agencies, business partners, ways in which we can identify, you know, a great number of different outreach opportunities to be able to provide to students that may not have the same level of opportunity based upon what's available in there at their school or even within their community. If you can go to the next slide, please. Overall, in terms of communication, we have internal communication with our middle school principals associations, the principals themselves, along with middle school counselors. We can put information into the employee news specifically about important dates, deadlines, process procedures. External communications is the same type of thing. We'll be releasing news releases, and that can come through news you choose. So different social media, social, social, excuse me, social media opportunities, our own admissions website, along with letters out to those identified groups. So those emails can also not just be an invitation to apply, but also additional information about upcoming, you know, activities or outreach opportunities, things of those aspects. And to be able to provide this information to different advisory committees, stakeholder groups as well. If you can go onto the next slide, please. There was questions about some of the accountability. And some of the accountability that we're looking at is aligned with some of our certain current goals that we have for the school division. And it's to continue to look at the variety of diversity that we have within the school and looking at how that is, you know, is reflective of, you know, providing educational resources and opportunities to those students. Who are those students who believe that they belong or at least believe that they can be applying to TJ? Now, certainly, some of these measures are new, and we would need to be able to establish baselines. But this is an area where we can set that baseline and then look to, how do we improve that and identify areas where we may not be as strong and continue to push forward? And this can be, you know, based on the number of families who are engaged with the outreach that we have. And how do we improve that? As well, as well as with students who are actually at TJ and, and understanding how they're, how they feel respected and included at TJ as long, along with their parents and how they feel respected within the TJ community as well. So these are accountability metrics that we want to put in place and measure and kind of guide our decisions and our approaches. of guide our decisions and our approaches to what we're doing and where we can continually improve. If you can go on to the next slide, please. And I believe I'll turn this over to Mr. Smith.
And so before we end our presentation, we wanted to stay within that 30 minutes. We also heated the board's request of adding information into a report. We have to apologize for the video, it is slow today. Adding information into a report with several next steps. The board has asked several good questions, and we've worked with staff to provide answers to those questions. And so we do feel that we've given you a lot to think about and are looking forward to the discussion the board will have on the TJ admissions process. I did hear questions about some things possibly not being part of this process. And of course, based on the discussion, we would certainly be able to add aspects into either proposal that's chosen based on how the board felt about adding those elements. But I do want to give you a sense of our current timeline. And there are some questions that we've been feeling about actually doing the vote within the month of December. But in order for us to have a class seated in the fall, we have to have some things begin happening at the beginning of January. So right now, we're in the process of developing those collection methods for our newly developed metrics. And during all of this, we're also developing and doing outreach to those who might be readers as part of our process. In the early winter, we expect the governor will have some recommendations on an application process. In the early summer, after we've gone through the entire application process and have invited those students to be part of the freshman class, as we do every year, we'll report data to the school board and we'll report on those available metrics and demographics of the applicants and the offers. And then finally, in the summer, if necessary, we would incorporate any of those governors' recommendations. We would review the data to identify application enhancements. And as part of this entire process, nothing is set in stone. Certain things that we might not be able to do this year could certainly, as they come out of the discussion, be built into future processes. And so with that, I do want to thank everyone who's been a part of this process, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement for their work on the paper and for their data analysis and research. Certainly want to thank Dr. Bonna Tatabas and her staff at TJ Admissions, along with Dr. Zulawaga, who's been a strong member of this team. Our folks in the Instructional Services Department, who have helped and provided that curricular approach that's so important for us, and really to our stakeholders who have provided lots of input to the process. We've gotten input both in person and we received input by email. A lot of people have strong feelings about the TJ admissions process, and that's good. It shows that our students, staff, and families are very interested in the work that we're doing in Fairfax County Public Schools. And so we do want to thank all of them. And I want to take a moment to thank all of you for your thoughtful input to this process. We had the opportunity to speak with many of you about the process and feel that we've brought something forward that will generate good discussion and dialogue so that we can have a process in place at the end of December and welcome those first students in the fall. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Omeche to begin the question process.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I believe Mr. Frisch will pick up from here.
Oh, and Mr. Frisch, if I could add, I just saw Dr. Bray Brandon. I certainly have thanked a lot of people, but I have to thank Dr. Bray Brand for pushing this as he has done and holding us up as we've moved forward in this process. He has been the face of this process. He has been the face within the community, along with you as board members. And so we certainly wouldn't be where we are without his stick-to-tiveness and his support.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. And we appreciate everything staff has done, but we're going to jump right into the questions here, and we'll start. Just before I get going, we're going to go for a while here, and we have every expectation that we'll have time for one round of go-backs. So my fellow board members, while you're crafting your section here, keep that in mind. And we'll begin with Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'm just getting my video, so please don't start the clock till the video's up. Thank you. I'm going to start with questions right away. Mr. Smith, you noted that in the current metrics that you and the superintendent proposed, it would yield about 4,300 potential applicants that show the academic aptitude. That's out of how many eighth graders countywide?
That's currently approximately out of 13,000 eighth graders countywide.
And is that 4,300 for Fairfax County only?
That would be just Fairfax County students. So those are those students who would meet the criteria based on the data that we have before us today.
And how many applications are you typically getting each year right now to TJ out of Fairfax County?
I'd have to let Jeremy answer that question. I know overall, it's between 2,500 and 3,000, but he may have the breakdowns on specifically who came from Fairfax.
Ms. McLaughlin, typically, that's around 2,000 students. The last couple of years, the numbers of applicants have been about 2,500. The previous number of years was around 3,000, and so that has increased from that number.
Okay. I do very much agree with Mr. Smith, your characterization and, I guess, in a very positive way, the description of what we're all here for. We want to maintain the high academic standards of TJ so it remains a premier STEM high school in the nation, but that we're also, along with the heart of equity. So I want to begin with my, like, that I absolutely embrace that. And I've shared with you, after a decade of experience in selective college admissions, I absolutely believe that Fairfax County can and should have long ago achieved a magnet STEM school that was both high achieving and diverse. So I guess where my concerns are, honestly, I look at the next step questions, and in particular, Dr. Bray Brand, I would appreciate in the future, you and your staff, that when we ask these next step questions, please have staff embed the links. A number of my important questions say things like, "See the September 25th memo to board members." That doesn't help mean, that doesn't help the public for ease of access of information. The links should all be there for any document you've sent to us. That's very disappointing to see that. I also did not see information about, when we're looking at unweighted GPAs, question 133, I was surprised in that response that it didn't provide the data to the questions I asked, which is, what's the number and the percentage of applicants who have a 3.5 unweighted GPA for the 2019 admissions class? The question was completely not answered and doesn't really allow me or other board members in the public to understand why you've developed this metric. So I think at the heart of where the concern I hear from the public is, very much a commitment to equity, very much a commitment to removing barriers, very much a commitment to the tremendous benefits of a diverse class. And I think geographic focus is going to be part of that piece in changing the way we do holistic admissions. But what's troubling to me is how you and your team are defining what is high academic achievement. I think saying 4,300 students with an unweighted 3.5 GPA doesn't necessarily capture that. Thank you, Mr. Frisch. You can put me on my go-back.
I will, thank you.
So I would like that question asked from the superintendent, though.
Yes.
So why are, why were my questions not answered? And will we count on getting the links and the information for me in the public?
Sure, sure. The links we can work on, I'm sorry about that. That is something, as we're putting together this new approach to put more of it in a white paper, we can get to the links. And as far as the issue and the number and percentage of the 3.5 unweighted, Jeremy, is that something we can follow up on prior to the board's final decision-making so that they can know that? We were at a 3.0, and we've moved it to a 3.5, and they're just wanting to see the numbers and percentages. Is that something we can provide?
Yes, I thought that we had provided that, but in looking at, I think I misread what the question was and provided different information.
All right, Jeremy, if we can get that to them this week, because I know Meghan, Ms. McLaughlin, and other board members would like that information prior to making their final decisions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bray Brand. Ms. Kiesgumara.
Thank you. Give me a moment to get my camera on. And thank you for this opportunity. I think it's on. Let's see. Okay. So I do thank you for this presentation, and I will say that my comments all center around the belief that this has to be ongoing work. We have to continue to get comment. I think we have to hear from our new CEO, our Chief Equity Officer. And I would like to outline some of the things that I want to include personally, but also I sent to all of my colleagues the revisions of what I sent earlier today. That does include comments, as I mentioned earlier. So what I think, what stickler points for me are, I absolutely believe that we need school representation. I do not believe that regionally, we can address the access issues that we've discussed so extensively without that. I do support a lottery in so much as we get sufficient information to understand that it is actually working toward the goals that we've identified with modeling, et cetera, and the input that I mentioned. And so I am providing the email, my phone is ringing, I'm sorry. And I hope to get comments from my colleagues to build on the language that I've submitted for the purpose of the public. The things that I've been able to outline that I think we already agree on, our legal compliance that would take into account the Loudon AG decision, that we would focus on developing alternative measures to improve access at CPS. Was that the, or is that your IC, Carl? STEM program.
Duly muted.
I thought it was the bell. I'm sorry. All right.
We'll give you another 15 seconds.
Okay. Knowledge, acknowledge and support improving diversity, that we consider comments from MSALC reports from the last five years, that we acknowledge the proposed changes would address finding intellectually curious students who would benefit from the STEM environment, that the pool of students should come from every school in FCPS, that the board expects the CEO to provide input, and that we would receive regular reports on our progress. So those are my comments, and I just wanted, I wanted to read that out so the public would know that this is where I'm starting. I hope to build consensus with my colleagues. This can be a resolution, this can be a motion, but my goal is to find those things that we agree on. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgumara. Dr. Anderson?
Okay, just getting my video on and setting up my own personal timer.
Dr. Anderson, your mic is very muted.
Oh.
There you go.
Hello? Is that better? I'm so sorry. I've been struggling all day.
We'll give you your time back. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be very quick because I have some questions that I want to ask, and then I have some comments that I'd like to make. One of the questions that I have is regarding, one of the proposals, I can't remember which one, I think it's one, has a provision for the top 100 students. Mr. Smith, can you speak again as to how those students will be evaluated, the top 100 out of the 550 seats?
Certainly, and I have to apologize for not being on earlier. My connections were all a mess and ended with a frozen screen of Ms. McLaughlin, so I'm back on now. We will be using the holistic review for those students, and so as we highlighted, the holistic review is part of the whole process. Where we would review the top 550 students in the second proposal, we would do that same thing in the lottery to do a holistic review of the highest evaluated 100 students and then provide them seats to the school, and then do the lottery with the remaining 450 students.
Thank you. One of the things that has been discussed and has been shared by so many of the students who've testified and written letters is the culture of TJ. What concerns do you have regarding this group, in my words, this selective group causing or creating a two-tier system in which that entire process diminishes the culture? I'd like to hear from you and maybe Dr. Bata Taitavis, if she is here with us, if she could speak to that as well.
I know that Dr. Bonna Tatabas is here, and she would certainly like to speak to that. What I can say from this perspective of the admissions process is that students wouldn't be aware of the pathway by which they received entry to TJ. So we wouldn't let a student know that you were chosen in the first 100 and the others were chosen by lottery or vice versa. Students would simply get a letter of invitation to TJ itself. And I'll let Dr. Bonna Tatabas talk about the culture and the supports that are currently in place at the school and what might occur to support students even greater.
Sure, hello. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and FCPS Leadership, thank you for this opportunity to discuss TJ admissions, and we will continue to be focused on all children belonging at TJ, creating that caring and welcoming environment. I believe that sometimes in some of the conversations that are being held, talking about the culture of TJ, I want to make sure that our children and our staff are seen as being highly welcoming, collaborative in nature. Our older students do a tremendous job of taking the younger students under their wing and mentoring them. And that does not go without saying that we, you know, can continue to benefit from professional development so that way we can understand the challenges that all students bring to our school in terms of inclusivity and that our students as well would benefit from developing that understanding. And so we have most recently incorporated some new goals into our school improvement and innovation plan. We have an equity team that is working very hard on developing some actions that will help toward those pieces. And ultimately, I'm confident that through our curriculum and programming, that our students will be supported each and every day, will be meeting the students where they are and developing their talent along the way. Thank you.
Thanks. My other question is regarding teacher recommendations. I know we've talked about this quite a bit, and Dr. Bonna Tatabas, please don't go, I'd like for you to speak to that as well. There's a lot of conversation, and I know this firsthand, somebody who's spent so many years in a school in terms of the pressure that can be placed upon teachers by parents for recommendations. I see this as a double-edged sword. It's an opportunity for teachers to recognize some students who may not otherwise have the opportunity, but it's also an opportunity for that to be subject to parent pressure or maybe even some gatekeeping. One of the things that I believe that I've heard as we engage in this discussion is how even teachers at TJ are able to at least predict where those teacher recommendations are coming from depending on the amount of these recommendations that are written by various schools. Can you speak to that a little bit, Dr. Bonna Tatabas, please?
To be honest, I have not been part of any of the TJ admissions process that looks at the application packets or looks at the letters. There are certainly community sentiments that go both ways, as you pointed out. Teachers do know their students best, and we also know that in some cases, some teachers in some schools know our school and that they know TJ and the programs at TJ better than teachers at other places. And so when it comes down to an individual teacher writing a recommendation, some of the people that I've spoken to who have served on some of the selection committees, and maybe Mr. Sugar can even speak to this as well, some will say that some teachers are very well-versed in writing the letters, whereas others may not be, and potentially that could impact. But again, I can't speak specifically, Mr. Sugar perhaps has a better understanding of that.
Mr. Sugar, did you want to add to this? I'm so sorry, Mr. Frisch.
He's welcome to reply.
Sure. So in terms of teacher recommendations, certainly what Dr. Bon Tadavis is sharing is true. You know, there, we do see that the teachers, generally just taking a step back, teacher recommendations come in in two forms for our freshman class, which we're discussing today. We have some requirements for the students. It's either a seventh or eighth grade teacher of math or science, and then it's a teacher of choice that they have write the recommendations. In terms of, of the recommendations themselves, we do find that schools that have high students with a large amount of interest, there's a, there's a level of experience in terms of writing recommendations. And, and that might be different from either a school that has fewer students who are interested in TJ or have historically been interested, as well as teachers that have have experience from writing recommendations over many years. And so one of the things that we do from an evaluation standpoint is look at that from a, an unbiased viewpoint of trying not to penalize students for teacher experience in terms of writing recommendations. And so that's how the, the recommendation itself is designed, is to try to elicit information about what their actually, their experiences are with the students as opposed to personal statements about, you know, individual strength or something along that lines.
How do you deal with it if, who has to acquire a recommendation from, I think you say either the math as a science teacher and then one other of choice? When that required teacher, what if there's a conflict there between teacher and student, and the recommendation is not what it possibly could be?
So the, the students have an option of, for the math, science, they have an option of four different teachers to be able to make that choice. And the teacher themselves also have the ability to refuse to write the recommendation and allow the student to have an opportunity to ask another teacher. And so that does happen from time to time where a teacher will decline the offer to write the recommendation. The other piece that we talk about with students is thinking about and how to engage in that conversation with the teachers about writing the recommendations and why, and, and who would be the ones that we are requesting recommendations for. And we also want to make sure that teachers have an opportunity to be open and honest about their recommendation. And so that that way, we're trying to keep, you know, bias out of the recommendations from a, from a teacher perspective. But, you know, and, and kind of that impact within there. And I hope that answered your question. And I'm sorry, if I don't, I can, I can certainly try to help clarify.
No, I'm going to spend the remainder of my time just kind of share where I am. I am in, in support of the merit lottery because I think many of the things that Mr. Sugar has said regarding bias, I think this is a way for us to have some neutrality in terms of this process. If all students are eligible and are meeting those requirements, I, I see that there's space here for us to use that merit lottery to help determine who does come into TJ. We have a number of schools, and I think some folks sent us some data regarding how many of the top 50 schools in the US that are utilizing a merit lottery system. It is a merit lottery. It still has a level of exclusivity in students who qualify. It's not every student. I do want to say, it gives me nothing but heartburn to hear about the, the, the top 100, the top tier. That does not sit with me for a number of reasons, particularly the, the culture that I think that could come out of that, even though it's well-intended. And also, I am not, I am not a, in favor of weighted GPA, so I want to be sure that is highlighted. I am not in favor of an approach that does not come down to a lower level besides the region. In region two, where I, where I am, we are in, our Mason's schools are in competition with schools that essentially turn out hundreds of kids over the course of five years, while our schools have very few. So I need this to be more granular. Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear the bell. Please place me on a go-back, but thank you, and I apologize for that.
Will do. Thank you. Owen.
Hi, thanks. I appreciate following Dr. Anderson as usual. I, I still have, to use her word, a lot of heartburn over the idea that we've gotten rid of teacher recommendations. I think in particular, I think as we start looking at this process, and you all referenced Dr. Plucker. Dr. Plucker did not say that we should get rid of teacher recommendations. The conversation was about our overreliance as, as a system on gibbers in our AAP Level Four Centers process, but not, not an indictment of teacher recommendations. And so I did see in some of the documentation that it said that the school board voted against teacher recommendations, and that is not accurate. This board voted to remove the fee. We voted to remove the test. But that, that was as granular as we got. So I would definitely like to see that corrected, because that is not accurate. You know, I feel like just as we have for a lot of scholarship programs that we use, there are ways to structure teacher recommendations, that you give them, you know, more opportunities to use a point system and a small level that gives some sort of teacher response that is unfiltered. And, and we use it in all different kinds of ways. So I, I, I don't, I don't agree that we have gotten rid of teacher recs, and I'm hoping that, that we will decide to include those. Another piece for me that I'd love to have someone speak to is why the maximum cap and not a minimum cap when we look at our regional pathway approach?
Marty, do you think you could address the, the maximum minimum cap piece? And as far as teacher recommendations, Ms. Cohen, we're here today at this work session to hear the feedback from the board, and if in the end, teacher recommendations is something this board believes needs to be re-added back into the process, we certainly can, we can certainly hear that feedback and incorporate that in any of the two final proposals. Marty or Jeremy, can you talk about the cap as a maximum versus a minimum? I think I know the answer, but I think you could express it better than myself.
So Jeremy, I know that Jeremy worked very closely in previous iterations of the process to establish caps. And there are a variety of ways of looking at caps in terms of ensuring that we don't go over a particular amount. And when you look at, at the minimum caps, I'll let Jeremy speak a little bit more about that.
Okay. And so when we, when we went through the cap approach, what we were looking for was maximums, was an idea to be able to provide some ge, more geographic representation. And that's the reason why we went to a regional approach, and I'm sorry, my video is taking forever to start back up here. But, so that's why we went to the regional approach. There is information, and I know there were some other board questions about individual school level caps. And so in the, in the, the research paper, there's also a table in there about the school level caps for Fairfax County as well. So you certainly can reference those. In looking at the minimums, we didn't approach it from a minimum, from a minimum standpoint of saying there would be a minimum number of students coming from, from each school. Looking at from a cap approach, we're also looking at the, kind of the idea of getting, you know, of, of pushing it out this way. And so there was kind of a, where we were historically until this point in time, which was there was no caps on an individual school. There were caps established for participating jurisdictions. But there, it was kind of taking that same level of caps that we have used in the past and placing it within our regions, and then kind of reassessing and rekind of configuring that down with the goal to help distribute more regional or geographic representation. And we really hadn't looked at it from a bottom-up saying there's some minimums that had to be absolutely required. Some of that, and it might be something where John can, John Foster can talk about in terms of, you know, minimums and things of that nature of what we're requiring at certain places.
And I will also add that when we were looking at the initial proposal, we were looking at a lottery process. And with that lottery process, we're looking at the overall number of students who could get in by any particular pathway. And so in, in looking at that first approach, it was how many students could get in from a particular pathway based on the lottery, and then not taking another look at that as we look at the holistic approach.
I think that's a concern is if we settle, you know, I think we all agreed that what we truly have is an application problem here. And we're, we're kind of trying to change the admissions process in the hopes that that is not yet another barrier. But we recognize we have a much harder job, which is to figure out why are kids not applying to TJ? And so my worry is when we look at a maximum, the whole goal has been to give kids an opportunity to go who haven't had that opportunity before. And so, but the goal was never to punish kids for whom that has always been seen as a pathway. And so, you know, my worry is, I look at my regions, which are pretty significantly underrepresented. And, and I will tell you, the enthusiasm to apply to TJ in many places is not there. And so my worry is when we look at these maximums, instead of making smaller minimums that kind of look proportionally, I just want to make sure what we're, what we're not unintentionally doing is trying to really push kids in who don't have a comfort level. Sorry. I would love us to relook at that. If we go this holistic approach, that it does maybe that make more sense. And Mr. Frisch, if you'll kindly add me for a go-back as well.
And that's just a brief follow-up to that. I can say that when we look at caps, it does go hand in hand with a recruitment process. We talk about increasing that pipeline, and certainly wouldn't want to put students or assign students or invite students to TJ who didn't want to be part of the process or didn't feel that they could be successful. And so i- in looking at those caps, it's not a cap in the sense of we must have this number of students from a particular school. As much as it is, this would be the, the greatest number of students that we could have if there was interest in going to TJ.
And Mr. Frisch, may I just follow up to ask what happens? Will you walk us through what happens if those maximums are not met?
You're gonna have to hold that for your back. I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen. But you'll have plenty of time to come up with a great answer, Mr. Smith. All right, up next, we've got Ms. Tolan.
Well, I'm very happy to follow Ms. Cohen. You want to answer her question as long as we're on this train of thought? I, she, I have the same question about why not a minimum versus a maximum? So you've talked about that, you know, and I think what I'm understanding is that when you looked at the lottery, it made sense to perhaps look at by region, a maximum number of students that would be accepted through the lottery process. If we are moving, if we have more of a holistic view of the students, you know, I have that same concern, where we're starting with schools right now that have very few students that have applied over the last several years, and we don't necessarily have maybe a clear understanding of why. How do we get those students to apply, and how do we, you know, have them be successful at TJ? So perhaps having, starting with a minimum number of students might make more sense. And then Laura Jane was just asking about how you were saying that with the maximum number, if a school didn't have that number of students, how then would you move forward? Does that make sense?
Yes, and so I'm going to ask Mr. Sugar to talk about how we would go through and identify students through, through either of the pathway approaches. But it's merely looking at those students, if you look at the holistic approach, it's looking to those students who were the most highly evaluated, and going through and bringing those students into the process based on their pathway and, and how highly they were evaluated. Again, we couldn't create students or add students to a particular applicant pool if there were no students to apply for that particular school. And so we would then just go to the next highest student on the list. That's how we would go through. And Mr. Sugar, if you could certainly verify that, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, so the process, and I, and I guess to try to explain the process in greater detail to explain how that would work, is as we would go through both from a, in, in both processes, you're looking at specific numbers, again, whether this is by the region or by the individual school. And so what we're saying is, is that we know, based upon the number of seats that are available, this is the number of seats that are going to come from a particular region or school, depending upon which one we go with. Once, once a particular, as we go through with the evaluation process, we're looking at the strength of an individual student's application. And that, that was really truly the same prior to this point in time as well. And so what you look at is, is the, the level of strength of applications. The students with the strongest applications were those students that were offered. And you work your way down until you hit the maximum number of seats available that we can even offer, and then the next grouping of students was placed in a wait pool, and then other students were not offered at all. What, what we're using now as a very similar model to that is we're looking at it from a regional perspective, as opposed to an unlimited number of students for Fairfax County, and in some cases in these areas that we used in the past. We're now implementing a maximum number of students that can come from one particular area. What that in essence does is it guarantees that each region will have that number of students that are coming from that particular region being offered admissions. Now, obviously, what, one of the things, and we talked about this, or we had shared previously, and I believe it is in the, the research paper, in terms of processes, is if a particular region does not have enough students that are remaining to fill the number up to the cap, then it would go to, it would go to the next students with the highest level of strength, which would maybe put one particular region or one particular area above their, their cap, because we're still looking to maintain that 550 seats within, within the school. I will add that in looking at all this from a modeling standpoint, and looking at it from over historical numbers in terms of applicants, one of the things that we have is we know that even within the last handful of years, we're still at 2,500 applicants. That's well in excess of the 550 seats that we're proposing. When we look at that from a regional standpoint, or even an individual school standpoint, we're still exceeding the number of seats based upon, that are available, based upon the number of students that have applied in the past. So we don't, we're not looking at this from saying that we believe, that, that based upon the evidence that we've had leading up until this point in time, that we would not have enough students applying from any of these regions to meet the, to meet the minimums, or I'm sorry, to meet the caps. Sorry, thank you for the warning. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Tolan.
Okay, so I would just like to say, you know, I think it's worth taking a look at that minimum number, maybe as a, as a way to approach it, if, if we are, if you, we end up leaning toward the holistic view. And then I also, and also have hip-homis Cohen to talk about, and maybe, you know, my view as a, you know, former middle school science teacher and a trainer of many middle school science teachers. You know, I really do feel particularly in those schools that have not historically sent students, that those teachers are really in a fantastic position to help us find those students, so they should definitely be included in the outreach program, but that their recommendations for these students will be key to finding the students that we're looking for. And as Laura Jane was talking about a little bit, there are lots of different ways to do recommendations. I would probably advise during this time, given the workload that our teachers have as well, to streamline the teacher recommendation process significantly, but to not take it out of, out of the application process. A couple of other questions that I had. One question I just wanted to ask, I understand that, you know, you're upping that class number to 550, which I, one of the people was super, super sensitive on capacity numbers, given where I sit in the county. And so I understand strongly the difference between, you know, that square footage in the building and how many students you can fit in by square footage, and your programmatic use of the building. I would just like to just get a little bit. I would just like to just get a little bit of reassurance that even if we up this number to 550, which, you know, I would be a proponent of that we're not affecting the programs at TJ by adding an additional 70 students.
So I'd like Mr. Plattenberg to weigh in on some of that with regard to capacity. And then also Dr. Bonatavas with the current capacity within the school. TJ is our only building where we have a set number of students in each freshman class. And so they could certainly weigh in and provide some input.
Yeah, I think my question is less capacity, just by square footage. So I'd really love to hear from the principal on if she's got another 70 students, how that will affect the programs that she runs at TJ.
We'll get an answer on that. Ms. Tolan, I don't know if you heard, but your bell did go. So let's get an answer from and we'll go from there.
Thank you. That's a great question because square footage does not always translate into instructional programs. And one of the things that we know at TJ is that we do have a lot of extra square footage. Part of it is because of the size of our research labs that are twice the size of traditional labs. So that square is leading about how much space is actually in areas that we use for instructional flexibility. And so those are adjunct classroom kinds of spaces. And I do feel comfortable that we could the capacity to about 2,000 and, and do so comfortably. If we increased it much beyond that, I do have concerns about the feeling of overcrowdedness, the lack of flexibility in, in some of the spaces. We do have to recognize that anytime, of course, that you're increasing the capacity, that there would have to be budgetary support for those additional teachers that would be added to the program. And I would definitely want to put in a plug to be able to say that where some have the impression that, oh, well, the school does get extra money just for being governor's school. We should not use that grant money to supplant the normal process, the normal staffing process that every other school is able to receive. And in another piece, I would like to be able to mention when we're talking about increasing capacity is that when we're looking at specialized learner centers, our goal typically is to keep those classroom sizes a bit smaller. And at TJ, we've been able to keep them slightly smaller on average, maybe two to three students smaller compared to a typical high school. But when we're talking about highly abled learners or developing the talent of highly abled learners, putting 33 to 35 kids in a classroom just because we can, I don't think necessarily meets the needs of specialized programs. So I would, I would strongly recommend that when we're looking at capacity, that we cap it at 2,000. Anything beyond that, I think could really be a stretch for our school.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Ms. Corbett Sanders. I expect Ms.
Just briefly on the capacity piece, as somebody, as many people know, over in my region and elsewhere in the county, a lot of our schools have more students in them than the capacity. So I appreciate Ms. Bonatavas wanting to have a lower amount of square or a higher amount of square footage, but I think that that's an equity issue. Regarding some of the comments that have been made today, there was a statement that said collectively, there was, that collectively in talking to people that lotteries would be a way to address a hybrid model, lottery would be a way to address some of the concerns about the enrollment class. I think that that's interesting in how it was phrased. It's would be a way. There are other ways. And so I do want to say that I am, I continue to be concerned about the lotteries because of what has been shown at schools across the country that have used lotteries and the attrition rate associated with it. I have some particular questions regarding the regional pathways that were discussed because what is not listed here is the number of students from a region that may currently attend a private school or are military connected. And so in my region in particular, we have a number of students who transfer in from the military and from private schools when they're ready to go to high school. So I think that those numbers by region should be looked at. Looking at who you reached out to, I would like to better understand what outreach was done with the business community because they have been longstanding partners of ours. And so if we could make sure that we do do some outreach there, if at all, if we haven't done so, I will advocate for a school by school approach to this rather than a regional approach based very similar to what Ms. or Dr. Anderson stated. And perhaps one of the things we might look at is just having a minimum number of students per school and a maximum number by region. And with that, those are my comments. And I look forward to a robust discussion and would like some feedback on some of the comments and questions I posed.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, when you ask about the business community, we actually have some meetings scheduled with the business community and working through the foundation, working very closely with Ms. Murphy, who's the director of the foundation. And there's been interest in the business community. And so she's working to pull together some leaders so that we can have continued, a continued discussion around TJ and the admissions process and the overall mission of TJ. We did not include them as part of this admissions process, but again, we do have plans to meet with them as part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I appreciate that. I would just suggest that in the future, since when TJ was established in 1985, the critical linchpin was that communicate, that collaboration and partnership with the business community. So prioritizing that is important. And I would expect that the business community is very similar to, you know, the corporation I left as retired from, which recognized that the more diverse a of a employment base or the more, more diverse of a student body, the better, because that leads to more creative creativity and innovation. So I just want to make sure we include that. What about my other questions?
Mr. Smith, I can talk about a little bit about the private schools if you want me to. So Ms. Corbett Sanders, in terms of the private school and the private school approach, what that is looking at is similar to the way that we look at the students that are attending the public schools. It's based upon their residency. And so it would be looking at the residency from a regional standpoint based on where the student actually resides. So while private schools may cross jurisdictional bounds or even cross the regions within Fairfax County, they may go to one private school in one section of the county or may, and may live in a different one. We would have them be an applicant based upon the region of where they live. That's not dissimilar to how we currently focus on our private schools in terms of looking at them to their representative caps if they are outside of Fairfax County. And that was the, the way in which we were including our private schools in from a regional approach, that they're looking at it from the overall region, not from an individual school standpoint.
So I know my time's up, but I would, the military students need to be included in that. And then the second piece is certain areas of this county have higher proportion of students going to private schools. And so I'm a little concerned about your regional numbers based on that.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
And I will take a go back, please, but.
Do you want me to respond to that? Yes, please. Okay. So for military, military students, and I, and I might need a little bit further clarification on your go back, Ms. Corbett Sanders on that. But the military students, if you're talking about current, currently here, military students that are attending schools, or if you're talking about not here, but going to transfer into the area. So we'll, we'll deal with that on a go back for the.
No, I'm sorry. The question was posed under this one. So if you could please answer it this one, so I don't use my go back.
Okay. So please clarify if you're talking about currently residing here, or if you're talking about military transfer that's into the future.
So we know that certain, at certain points, military personnel transfer back to the DC metro area. It's usually when they are getting ready to retire or go to the flag officer level. So we know that there's a higher number of eighth grade students or potentially eighth grade students coming from different demographics. We see this with our military students and we see this with our, our students from private schools.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, can you clarify for him so we can answer the question?
So that's what I'm trying to do. The, the numbers, there's 11,500 military students in Fairfax County. But looking at the age level when they transfer back into Fairfax County talks about, identifies where that that subgroup of kids who potentially would be in TJ. And so I'm concerned that you're under representing region three and four in your regional numbers because they may not be counted in the existing base.
So the, so the regional numbers are purely based upon the demographics of the currently enrolled students. But, but let me finish, Ms. Corbett Sanders, are currently based upon the currently enrolled students in eighth grade in our current eighth grade class based upon those individual schools. So we can't, we can't predict how much a particular school will increase from one year to the next. But if we're only looking at students that are just coming in, in the future, what we have done in the past is dealt with the residency requirements because most of those students and families don't arrive until the summer preceding their school year. And so we've been able to work with those families and allowing them to be able to apply prior to their arrival to Fairfax County. The ones that actually arrived during the application window, they applied during the application window without any problems. And I'm not, and I'm not sure. So when we look at, and this goes back to that minimum maximum question from beforehand, the number that was still out there is that 70% of the, the either 550 students or the 450 students. And it's divided out to be proportionate from each region to that particular number. And that's the reason why. On the pie chart within the presentation, you saw numbers that varied for within the region. And that's purely down to the individual school enrollment. And that was based on September membership.
Jeremy, Jeremy, if I could, Mr. Fresh, Jeremy, I think the question may be the late person at home. If you're coming in the summer and we work with those families, do they get slotted into a particular region for the count in either of these proposals? Or are they in an undesignated pool? That, that I think is one of the questions. Are they, are they slotted in or are they in an undesignated pool because they not arrived and picked a region yet where they're at a school?
So while we're talking about two different things, so in the, in the past, in the past, that didn't matter, right? The problem is, is that if a family is not here currently, they're, they're not actually a part of the application process. And so the, the piece of what we're currently have on the table that we're discussing is of those families that are currently here. And Ms. Gilbert Sanders' question is a valid one because it takes into account of the future people who are transferring into the area, not, and it's, it's specifically to our military families, but there are other families that transfer in. And so we would have to, you know, make some type of consideration about how that would look. They would be included into a particular region. But there, right now, we wouldn't have a way to be able to put them into a region because we don't know where they're going to live. All right. If people need further clarification on that, they can bring it up in their, in their go back. All right. Up next, we have Ms. Bukarski.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually happy to go after Ms. Karen Sanders because she brought up something about attrition rate. And in our, in the white paper that you provided to us, you actually state that admission lotteries are not a common approach to admission. And then you go on to talk about Quinick County and who consequently actually has a very high attrition rate. And why that matters is because, at least to me, we are in the business of impacting student outcomes. So this goes back to the accountability measures where I see quite a few accountability measures surrounding caring culture, which is imperative because we know our kids can't learn in environments that are not inclusive and welcoming. Obviously, but I don't see any accountability measures for student outcomes, for academic outcomes. And I'd like to know why those were omitted. Or your thoughts on that, please?
Marty or Jeremy? Do you want to answer that? Then I'll jump at once.
Looks like we lost Marty, just FYI.
Okay, that might be why. Sorry, it's really slow. If you click the camera first. Ms. Bukarski, so one of the things that we were focusing on was the, some of the issues that were talked about beforehand. In terms of, in, in, in terms of attrition rate, we currently have models that allow us to select students for attrition in the, into the future years in terms of the sophomore round and potentially even the junior round. And so we do have that. So there is some level of attrition that we find within Fairfax County. I will, you know, I, we did not, or at least I did not look at the, the level of attrition rate from each of these other schools that had only had lottery models. And I can't say whether the other schools that were comparison, what their attrition rate is either. So to, for me to be able to say that one had more attrition than another, I really can't comment on that because that wasn't something that we, that we actually looked at. I know that Ms. Ruda also has joined us and she was a part of the, the research piece of that. And I don't know if she has any information. But to, to be able to look at the pieces within the lottery and to look at the, the, the kind of the goals, one of the things that was shared from the, when we worked with the, the, the external experts was this idea of the, the, the size of Fairfax County alone, not to include, not to exclude our participation jurisdiction, but the size of Fairfax County alone of about a 14,000 students per class, anywhere from 13,000 to 14,000 per class. And to have a, a single school was of 500, 550, whatever that number happens to be, we're proposing 550 here. Is there's still a great demand. That's still a very small portion of what our students are going from a single class into one high school. And so there still is a large demand there. I don't know if that quite answers your question.
I mean, look, at the end of the day, I just want to know, you know, we've got accountability measures of whether or not this, these policy changes are going to be successful. All I care about is student outcomes and I want to know how we're going to measure those. That's kind of where I'm going.
So Ms. Bukarski, I think this is something staff can go back and talk about. Our outcomes at TJ have been very strong for a long time. And I think what I hear you saying is whatever we do, we've got to maintain those same high standards. How can we check the distribution of grades? The retention at ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. We have had a few kids after ninth grade leave and we've done sophomore admissions. And I think what I hear you saying is we need to continue to look at what those trends have been and compare what those trends are with either of these two approaches that the board would decide so that we have our pulse on the academic strength of the school, just like we have caring culture and the equity of access goals that we've talked about. I hear you and we can go back and work on that. We can go back and work on that and have those forward for the board to be able to monitor whichever approach you choose.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Brayburn. And it's important for those individual students and ensuring we're supporting them so they are successful. I would also like to talk to the teacher recommendations. I, I know how they could be a source of bias, but I really do think this is very short sighted of us. As we know, for many students, our teachers can be the one and only advocate and champion they have. Dr. Bonatavas said, you know, how, how well teachers know their students. So finding a way to streamline this to just be a data point, a data point for us to consider in the larger context. I, I really strongly recommend. I I really strongly recommend we do not ignore those. I think I think I'll stop there for right now. Thank you.
Can we put you down for a go back, Ms. Bukarski?
Yes, Dr. Braebrand wants to.
Dr. Braebrand.
Yes, Mr. Frisch, I just want to say, and maybe we'll get to it in next steps. If this board has consensus about the role of teacher recommendations, and I don't know that it does, but I'm just sharing because I've heard now multiple board members. This is not something, staff did have some concerns. But I think we, if the board directed us to look at how to do it, to balance some of those issues about how the teacher recommendations are done and to keep the workload minimal for teachers with everything else they have going on, but still keep some teacher voice. It is not impossible for staff to look at that in either of the two options. So again, this is another one where if the board speaks to us now with feedback about that piece, we can make sure that it's addressed with whatever you all would vote on later this month.
Okay, that's great to hear. Mr. Frisch, I I found my other question that I was rifling through my notes, so very quickly.
You're late. Go ahead.
I saw in the white paper, there was also mentioned that lack of student applications has been a an issue that impacts diversity. This was something that I brought up at our very first meeting months and months ago. I said, how are we talking to these students and these families to figure out the why, why, why are they not applying? And then we could figure out how we could respond. So to this day, I I don't know that we have a mechanism for that. But I just really implore you to talk to the people who are impacted, all the people and and just learn the why, and that can lead us to solutions.
I believe that was your bell. Dr. Braebrand?
That is a brilliant question. That is a brilliant question. We're trying to get at that in one of our earlier slides where we slide nineteen about parents who feel respected there, students who feel respected. And I would say to the board to listen to what some of our TJ alumni and students have said because the word of mouth on TJ is one of the cultural things that's going on. The word of mouth among some student groups is, I'm not welcome there. I'm not respected there. I'm not felt to be included there. And I think that's part of what we've got to work on in the application process. I think either of these two approaches is going to send a clear signal to our students that you are welcome, you are included, you are respected. And that's what I'm really excited about. And I think it's going to help Jeremy and his team, working with school counselors, to really say, this is a new day at TJ. It's it's not, you're not locked out just because you've never seen a kid from this school go there. You have a shot. There is a shot. Now put your application in and and let's go for it. So I do think that's something we've got to watch for. And I know, Mr. Smith, do you want to add to my comments or correct them if I'm off?
No, you're you're right on the on target. And I also want to say that we had some very good feedback from our stakeholder groups. And we'll be working closely with our equity office to perhaps revamp our parent meetings so that when a student gets an invitation, that we would want to draw as many parents out as possible. But instead of a simple sit and get about TJ, to actually use a conference type model where parents can break up into small groups and talk about some of the concerns or questions that they normally have about the school and the curriculum, but whether or not they feel welcome and having some targeted outreach and targeted conversations with them to elicit some of that information. So, you know, we're on the same page there, and I think that there are ways for us to do it for families who don't feel that they're part of the process and also for families who are invited in to get at some of those things that might be keeping them from continuing through the process.
And I appreciate that. And I would say anecdotal is not the same as systematic, and I will leave it at that.
I appreciate it. Ms. Omish, you're up.
Okay, I just experienced the slow video myself. All right. So thank you, staff, for the presentation. With the teacher recommendations piece, I I'm wondering if we can approximate some of the information by looking at any kind of data we have on this. I I do agree with what Ms. Cohen said, that I don't know that it's exactly accurate, an accurate read of Dr. Plucker's research to say we should eliminate it entirely, but I am concerned about the equity implications. So what, have you guys looked at anything and how it's been used in the past, maybe more closely to see that there might be bias in that?
Marty, do you want to take that? And and one of the things, Marty, in answering, is there a way that if we were to have a teacher recommendation that we can streamline, in a sense, the variability for teachers that have experience writing their one hundredth recommendation? And that teacher who may be for the very first time writing their first or second recommendation for a kid?
So we we've done some of that with the teacher recommendation process. I know that the former Office of of Program Evaluation did some of that work to to streamline the process, to look at a point system, to take some of the subjectivity out of the process. And we could certainly look at ways to streamline the process even more, figure out the the best way to get as much information about a student as possible without getting no information about a student. And to also think about that workload for teachers. And that workload is a real thing for some teachers. And I know that while teachers can provide good information on students, having worked in the former Cluster Office and having worked worked very closely at Longfellow, I I know that teachers would would often talk about the additional workload of teacher recommendations on top of grading, teaching, et cetera. So we can take another look at that through ORC and certainly through the TJ Admissions Office if the board is interested in bringing that teacher recommendation back.
Yeah, I certainly am not pushing in that direction. I think it's it's a question mark for me. And just looking at, you know, what does it, what does it look like? Especially for maybe identifying those kids who otherwise wouldn't be considered. That that's really where I'm thinking it might be beneficial. A separate thing, I would like to request kind of a bold faced confirmation that in the multiple pathways approach, as I'm going to call it, students won't know how they've been selected.
Yeah, students will not know how they've been selected. That that can be bold faced, and I can say that that students will not know. Yes.
Okay, and and how have we given thought to how we're going to avoid students finding out or having this be kind of a negative externality on them and how it impacts, you know, culture, whatever?
Well, and I can certainly, and I don't want to keep throwing back to Dr. Bonatavas, but I believe that she being the expert on her her school culture and her students can talk about some of the the things that students discuss now in terms of the process. I know that as a former second grade teacher, I was often the the one who was on the phone with parents and with students when they didn't get the invitation into the advanced academic program. And so certainly reaching out to the school, reaching out to school staff to talk about ways they're currently supporting students. But I I can certainly let you know that that they wouldn't find out about the particular entry into the school from the TJ Admissions Office. There are current things that are proprietary as part of the process that parents and students would like to to learn more about. And we've done a very good job of ensuring that we don't share that information with students and families.
Did Dr. B want to weigh in or?
Dr. Bonatavas, do you want, did you want Ann to share some things abroad? Yes? Yeah, Ann, you want to share a little bit?
Sure, I was listening and I want to make sure I'm sharing the right part you want me to share. Can you restate that?
Yeah, yeah, no, no worries. The next question's for you anyway, but this one was about ensuring that students don't find out or ways that we're going to mitigate as a system having, you know, different labels or whatever and how students are chosen, should we go with the multiple pathways approach?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, we are very, very sensitive to the fact that it may be developmentally a characteristic or behavior for teenagers to kind of sort and select and be able to say, oh, well, you got in for this reason, or you were part of a quota. That's something, that is already something that can happen in any high school USA. However, I would say that one of the things that we have to do at TJ is to be very explicit about that narrative or that mindset to not even be part of our culture or our thinking. And I am very proud that overall our students are very accepting. They don't, you know, they're not questioning how the classmate next to them got into the school. And we also want to provide opportunities for all students in that summer before entering TJ to to kind of find a place if they want it within our school. In in normal times, I would say that there would be opportunities for touring the school, getting to know students, getting to know staff during the summer months. But one of the things that we found during last summer was that we created enrichment opportunities for students where they were non-credit bearing, did not have an impact on, you know, on a pathway of getting them on the right track so they could accelerate through TJ as quickly as possible. It was more about getting to know each other and building a community. And I would say that our freshman IBET program does that extremely well. And I've already been talking to our division leaders this year about preparing our summer program specifically with this year's incoming freshman class in mind because it may be larger than we're used to from the past. There may be students coming to us from places that that they have not traditionally come to us. And we want to make sure that they are all feeling welcome in our school. So those conversations are already happening and we're in tune with that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you highlighting that. I think we're gonna want to be, especially if we move forward with the multiple pathways intentional, given that the past has been a single pathway, right? Everyone has kind of gone through the same standard. And in this one, we want, we're gonna have everyone go through the same standard, but in different ways, right? So we don't know how students might take that. So just want to make sure we're we're, again, intentional about how we approach it. The second, the the other question for you, Dr. Bonatavas. So there's been this kind of concern based on an implicit assumption of what might happen with rethinking merit or misunderstandings about the meritocratic nature and what it's, what it is, what it's not. Do you have concerns, given the merit thresholds in place right now for both proposals, that the need for remedial support would be notably different? You know, there's, there's been this sense that somehow there's, there's going to be an issue, but I'd like to hear your your take.
Sure, I'd like to reiterate that a shift in demographics does not equate or mean that there is a shift in talent. And to me, that is a compelling narrative for all of us to realize because there is so much talent within FCPS. And with all things being equal, when students are meeting those thresholds for algebra, for a GPA requirement, the the love that they would have for STEM, then we know that we're going to be able to meet those students where they are and take them to where they would like to go. And and I get concerned when I hear people talking about remediation at at TJ because sometimes people are thinking that you have to be here to enter TJ, that there's some kind of special readiness that a student already has to have to possess that is above and beyond everything else. But that's not what our entrance standards say. And and so that when we know that our students need, our goal is that our students graduate with an honors diploma, that they complete calculus by their senior year. Any student meeting those requirements that are in either the proposals that you have right now will be able to meet those graduation requirements for TJ. And it is our job to support those students to get there.
And can you speak to your assessment of maybe the quality or the standard of the school and how it's reflected based on that as well? Whether that, would you anticipate an impact?
We already have, I would say, you know, tiered approaches of readiness when students are coming in. And so I would imagine that those same kinds of efforts that our teachers are taking to bring the students in, find where they are, and then provide the appropriate supports in a multi kind of system will continue to exist. We have to remember that at TJ, we have the minimum three point O grade point requirement to stay in TJ. Actually, I think I've shared with the board before and the public that as long as a student is working earnestly, they feel happy at TJ, their parents are pleased with them. We have an academic plan in place. If that student has a two point eight or two point nine, they're going to remain at TJ. Over the past three years since I've been at the school, our recidivism rate of students has gone up. We have not been losing students because of the efforts to welcome all of our students and to work with them one on one.
Ms. Omish, we'll give you another fifteen seconds since that team seemed they were, your clock went over into the speaker's time.
Yeah, I I was wondering what happened there. The the final question I'll ask now is for staff regarding how we're going to monitor afterwards. What is the plan, you know, in terms of review so that we can recalibrate or revisit based on the results? And of course, go back, I'll go back.
Marty, are you talking about the ongoing monitoring?
Sorry, moving forward. So we're changing the plan now. We're going to have to continue to revisit, right, to make sure it's successful in implementing it?
So we would look at some of those those metrics and the data points that we shared with the board earlier in the slides and in the report. And certainly prepare information. Again, the board would receive the annual report of students admitted into the freshman class based on demographics. So that would be the first step. Looking at feedback from parent surveys, from the Student Engagement Survey, Parent Engagement Survey, and then developing those two new metrics around students who perhaps see themselves and parents who see their child at the school. So those are the pieces that we're currently working to develop. Pulling that information together for a report to the board early in the fall would be good. If, end of summer might be pushing it a bit, but at least early in the fall so that if we were going to make any changes or if there are any recommended enhancements to the program, we could, we could do that sooner than later so that we'd be in good stead for the the admissions process to begin in November, December.
Thanks.
And and while all of that is very systematic, I know as Ms. Bukarski said, we would also be looking at that anecdotal and working very closely with the school, very closely with the region office. I'm sure that our equity office would be very highly engaged in getting feedback. We could do focus groups. We could do a lot to engage students and families after this very momentous change to the process.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you. Thank you. I I agree with my feelings.
Your, your mic is a bit.
Can you hear me?
It's the same. Maybe turn your camera off?
Yeah, I'll try that. Is that better?
Not at all. Sorry.
If you go to your Skype, I'll, I'll run on my phone. That seemed to fix it last time, so I will do that.
Okay.
You go to your Skype, that's okay.
Okay, Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Yes, thank you. So as I have stated many times during many years, TJ is simply one data point that highlights the fact that there's an imbalance in our system. There's an imbalance in academic offerings, academic achievement and equity across FCPS. And we have to take responsibility for that as well as the pipeline. There have been many systemic issues. I brought those up at on the October twenty second work session where my colleagues supported my amendments. And while I appreciate the many attempts that have been made through the years, what we have before us today is to open opportunities for more students. But my frustration continues to lie in the fact that until we make changes regionally, analyzing, comparing and ensuring equity in our math and science curriculum in all elementary and middle schools, in all elementary and middle schools, providing analysis of STEM curriculums, and ensuring accountability, be it the RAS, be it Mark Greenfelter's office or Division of Instructional, or another Division of Instructional Services, I believe this has to be done in parallel. So Dr. Braybrand, my first question is to you. What can we do to ensure that this will happen? Will there be some kind of look to see at what are the impediments to the numbers, where we are, and what do our, what do our STEM and science and math curriculum looks like? How can we start to change that? My first question.
Sure, thanks, Ms. Darnett Kovacs. I'm gonna let Dr. Presidio make a few remarks. I totally agree, you know, I referenced your, your October piece just a few minutes ago, actually, because it is a great roadmap that the board supports. The pipeline needs to be addressed, curriculum in every school needs to be addressed, that their standards of teaching and instruction are the same standards across the county schools. You, you have your finger on the pulse that we've gotta be sure that's the reality, because that's not the perception in many communities. And it's not your perception either as a board member. I mean, I think that's the honest feedback you've given, you've given me.
I, I have, but it's not my perception, it's my reality. You can tell it by the data points and how many people get in from schools in my area. And I don't think it's, it's necessarily some of these tweaking issues we're gonna do. And we've had long conversations about.
Yeah, I will say one thing, I think the local norms that we, the board just agreed on last week will help begin to enhance the speed of talent development. The addition of young scholars will be able to do that work even earlier than second grade. Part of one of our new areas, I think, that Dr. Presidio, and I'll let him speak more, we're gonna have to focus on that pre-K2 at a much deeper level than we ever have, because we start making these assessments at second grade, first and second. And that's so early in the development of a child to be making those. But we're gonna have to double down on those opportunities in those first years of school and stick with them throughout. Dr. Presidio, are there some other things you'd like to share as well from Ms. Darnett Kovacs's comments?
Sure, just real briefly, I, I would say, we actually started a deep dive as a leadership team on, on the question of advanced math last year and made some pretty good progress in terms of equity of access of opportunities. But we still have a lot of work to do in this year's, you know, focus on virtual, successful virtual learning. Obviously interrupted that work, but we are working on a plan that will have us ensure that we have equity of access and opportunity, as you said, Ms. Darnett Kovacs, to advanced math offerings. That's part of our AAP plan, Equity Plan, as Dr. Braybrand mentioned. The local norms will expand access, so that work last week by the board is a huge step in, in the right direction. And we also have a plan to implement local Level 4 programs in the remaining approximately 40 elementary schools that do not have a local Level 4 program. And that is in the Division Strategic Plan, and we have a three-year timeline to get that completed. And all of that is related to ensuring that we have equity of access to advanced math course offerings. You also mentioned STEM, and I would point out that we have some really innovative STEM programming and a lot of central office support in terms of curriculum materials, resources, and professional development that's offered. But that is not a funded program, and it is not a required program right now in Fairfax. So it is something that schools have the discretion to determine if they're able to staff it with their local resources. So that would be another area where we need to have some future discussion with the board related to program expansion.
All right, thank you. So regarding where we are today, I'm gonna start with outreach. The fact that we haven't had a public hearing on this, I feel, is a mistake. And Dr. Braybrand, I have a question for you on your timeline. Is it flexible or can we revisit the decision, the next Thursday's meeting and have a public hearing in January and then allow for more time in decision-making into January?
We're in a pretty, pretty tight timeline, Mr. Smith, Mr. Schugart. I, I, we are pretty up to the wall. Do you have what would be the very latest date? I, I, I recall that the 17th was getting pretty damn gone close, Mr. Smith.
That was it, Dr. Braybrand. And I'm using no camera because I have a slow connection today. We run into issues around ensuring that we have the right individuals in place as part of the selection process, that we have the right training in place for those individuals who would be part of the process, getting information out to families, going through that information, remembering that there are only a few individuals in the TJ admissions office. We are normally well beyond and through a particular point at this normal time of year as part of the process. And so we'll be working very hard now to ensure that we have students seated by the end of the year.
So no flexibility, you're saying, at this point, for a public hearing of any sort?
So, so in, in terms of the timing, I, I think that it would be difficult for us to not have the vote on the 17th. I'm not saying that there couldn't possibly be a public hearing, but there would be no time for, or at least for us to move forward beyond January, I'm sorry, beyond December to actually get a class seated.
Okay, I, I'll, I'm gonna work offline just to understand that a little bit better. I am for main, for reinstating teacher recommendations, but this has to be tightly standardized with a rubric. And I'm wondering if you had talked about that. I have many, many, many anecdotal stories through the years of how teachers in one county are, one part of the county are much more adept. In fact, teachers that are really, have, may have never been asked to write a TJ recommendation, and where do they begin? So I see this as both ways, right? There's that situation, which is, which is not equitable, because it's, it, it's asking, it's like asking a professional to write something who's, who's been adept at this and does it, and somebody who's coming in from the outside who might have never done it. It is certainly not gonna be the same recommendation. So, but I also see the merit in having the, the recommendation for those kids whose families may not understand what a big deal this is and may not even see their own kid's potential. So have you talked about a rubric? Could you construct one fairly quickly? Because I think the recommendation, if reinstated, must be standardized and must be tight.
So I'll let Jeremy talk a little bit about the recommendation process, because there is a standardization to it now, but Jeremy, could you speak a little bit more about it?
Sure. So the teacher recommendations has been a part of the, the application process for many years. And we do have an evaluation tool in place to be able to go through that process and look at it. Our teacher recommendation currently is a multi-part recommendation. So there are questions, it's, it's kind of, I would say, at a very high level, it's a questionnaire where the teachers actually respond to a series of questions about the individual students, academics, along with the, the actual written portion. So there's very specific questions that they write to, along with an open free response. And I know many years ago, prior to me being in the office, there was a way in terms of even more standardization, I think in terms of what Ms. Darnett Kovacs, what you're talking about, in terms of some rubrics and, and pieces that kind of go along with that. And I do believe that we can go back and reflect on those really quickly and be able to look at the pieces that we currently have in place and how we can modify those and make sure that those can work if we were to re-implement a teacher recommendation into the process.
Okay.
To add to that, that teacher recommendation form and process was something that was worked on the program, well, it's currently ORSE. And so we certainly can work with them to, to, you know, kind of look at that all over again and make sure that we're, we're where we need to be so that that way, it's not providing biases or intentional biases within the process. Thank you.
So I, I will put that as the next step, that you, that you can provide us a, something in, in draft, at very least, if we are going to change that for, if, and if next Thursday's vote remains the same. So right now, I do appreciate the more, at this point, holistic review pathway with regions. And please put me on to go back as I have a few more questions.
Muted, Carl.
I had to do it at least once. The only other person before me would be Ms. Marin, do you wanna take a, take a turn here?
Mr. Frisch, I haven't spoken yet, Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Oh, right, I forgot. You're joining us by telephone.
I'm joining by telephone.
Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
That's fine, thanks. But thank you, I appreciate, and you can actually see my video, because I'm using two different pieces of technology. So appropriate for a STEM conversation. So anyway, I, first, thank you, I, I, thanks for all my colleagues' comments. I won't repeat a lot of what people have said, but I wanted to put in a strong plug for both the minimum cap. I think Ms. Cohen said it well, we don't unintentionally hurt anybody for whom this has been their dream, but we also wanna make sure we, you know, include our diverse populations who have an aptitude and passion for STEM. So I think that's a great start. Teacher recommendations, I also wanted to put something else out there that I think is important. I understand there may be variance across the county, and I think some of that may be addressed by both training and really using as a data point. But I, I wanna pull out that I think teacher recommendations for kids who may not as easily qualify through problem-solving essays and CISTs, but have that aptitude and passion for, and I'm talking specifically about our twice-exceptional kids. My kiddo is twice-exceptional in music. But if you had to put him through a problem-solving essay and a student information sheet with his language difficulties, he would never qualify, even though he's a musical savant. I think we need to be really careful to keep in mind that students with disabilities are also underrepresented, and we wanna make sure we have a process that they can be identified. So I think teacher recommendations are super important there. In terms of, I agree very wholeheartedly with Ms. Darnett Kovacs about needing to build the pipeline. I've said before TJ is a symptom, not a problem. And while we need to address the symptom, we also need to fix the problem. I also have concerns about our accountability metrics, and I'd like to speak to those briefly before I go on to my other concerns. I think it's very important to measure our caring culture and make sure all of our students are accepted and welcomed at TJ. But I also think we're making two fairly drastic changes to our admissions policy. We are dropping the test and we're adding regional pathways, and we need to measure the effect of both. And we need to also make sure that our students are not just welcomed at TJ, but really thriving at TJ. It's not just about admissions, it's about success. So I really would love to see as a next step, and I'm gonna put this in the metrics regarding retention, around, regarding consistent and equivalent to the diversity makeup of the school of TJ, utilization of the most advanced classes and labs at TJ. Because my goal is to make sure that our diverse populations not just have access to TJ, but really thrive in TJ and can access and learn and benefit from all of the amazing things that TJ has to offer. So I'd like to put that out there, that I think it's a really important metric to measure what we've done. I also have some questions regarding the problem-solving essay and the student information sheet, specifically that it's looking to measure the portrait of a graduate skills. My concern is that, well, those skills are very important for all of our students, including our TJ students, there seems to be a de-emphasis on STEM skills. And since this is a STEM-focused school, could someone talk to me a little bit more about our STEM skills? Even a problem-solving essay seems to be as much about writing as it is about the STEM problem. Look at that, perfect timing. I'll need to go back, Mr. Frisch.
Yep, I've got you. Did folks catch that last question there about STEM?
I'll let Jeremy talk about the, the, it's currently the, the student information sheet and how it elicits information regarding STEM and the, and a passion for, for science. So Jeremy, could you talk a little bit about that? And knowing that we are also developing other areas that can use the, the foundational aspects of the portrait of a graduate to, to get to that passion for STEM and science. So Jeremy?
Right, so the intention there was, is that while it's 20, it's the portrait of a graduate and 21st century skills, those are grounded in the importance of how that relates to the STEM schools and, and being a student at TJ. And so those questions would be formed, and the students' responses would be developed so that that way they would be eliciting the responses towards that and, and that end. Additionally, those are also elements that are going to contribute to ensuring that students are successful, or what we would believe would help contribute to identifying successful students while they're at TJ. The, 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 the one piece about the problem-solving essay is not about writing. It truly is about the ability to solve and, and work through problem-solving. It, at one point in time years ago, it was more about a persuasive essay in terms of how you would write and respond to a, a topic. But a number of years ago, we transitioned to a problem-solving essay. The problem-solving essay is a math or science-based problem with multiple variables where the students themselves have to solve the problem, provide a solution, along with providing how they solve that problem. So we're asking them multiple, multiple ways in which they're answering the problem. One is, they need to provide a solution to the problem. Did they come up with the quote-unquote "correct answer"? But the second part of that is, is actually starting to evaluate them in terms of their ability to think through the problem. Did they use, you know, different skills to be able to go through this? Or did they just use brute force? How, how are they explaining that? It is an essay format in terms of their response, yes. So they're writing it all, they're sharing that information with us. But we're looking at, because it's a timed essay and it's in a proctored environment, we're not looking for a refined essay per se. We're really looking at what was their thought process? How did they approach the, the problem? And there are elements there that are really about the, the science and math skills and abilities within that problem-solving aspect.
I still think they're writing their answer, but I'll, I'll explain more of my concern about your answer.
Go back.
I'll go back.
I, I would also add, Jeremy, that for, for those students who might have difficulty with writing and who may have it noted in their IEPs, we do follow accommodations that are written within IEPs and provide those accommodations for all aspects of the process. So a, a student wouldn't be disadvantaged for writing as, as part of the, the student information sheet or the student profile.
Correct, we, we do provide all accommodations based upon their IEPs, five of four plans, or even for our English language learner students that have that as well. Yes.
All right, Ms. Marin?
Yes, thank you. I've been listening to everything and just taking it all in. You know, I, I agree with the ideas that are being shared about, you know, caps and looking at, you know, a minimum as opposed to a maximum or instead of a maximum. I also agree with what's been said about looking at a, a level more granular, granularer than the regions, looking at those pipelines per school. And another thought that I'm having is, you know, we, we do have other magnet schools in FCPS. None are as, seems to have as much competition as, as TJ, but there are, you know, the art schools and, you know, we have 100 mil. And so I think, I'm just also thinking about, are the policies and the practices that we're putting in place here, you know, do they dovetail with those other practices? Although I know that TJ is, is a different kind of animal in that way. But I, I think as I listen to all these particulars, I, I still have this unwavering sight on how do we create more access for the most students in this public school system? TJ is something very special, but everyone should have the chance to go for it. And so, you know, I agree with the conversations, it's not just about the admissions, it is the much more holistic approach. So, you know, I just continue to listen to all the conversation and, and the details, but I, I'm eager to get back up to that policy level discussion that the board has and what we're trying to say with our decision. And then there are always gonna be things, you know, details to worry about and figure out, but I'm, I'm eager for us to figure out what the board is, is going to be demonstrating with our decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. All right, it is now my turn, so we're gonna go ahead and pass the management of the meeting on to Ms. Omech. Ms. Omech, do you wanna take over?
Well, here I am, so thank you, Mr. Frisch.
Thank you.
No, absolutely. Okay, folks. So time check. We're at 4:30. So realistically with go backs right now, we are going to need, if we want to do a reasonable amount of time for go backs, we might have to consider two options. So I'm going to pose a quick poll to the board and see how we want to proceed. We have option one, which is to have 90 second go backs. But I'm going to ask that we extend the meeting by 30 minutes to put us at 5:45. Okay, that's option one. Option two, to keep us at 45 seconds because that's the only realistic way. We're going to end at the time we originally said around 5:15. So I'm going to ask the, if everyone can lower their hands, we have a list of folks to, who wants, who want to speak?
Can I have a point of order? Point of order?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Can we make it two minutes?
If I could just, do you mind? So I haven't spoken yet, and I fear that we're going to end up at only having an hour for, and so far 10 people want go backs. I don't think that we can do two minutes each in an hour. We just had three minutes each and it took an hour and a half. So.
Mr. Frisch, this is Megan McLaughlin. I want to suggest a variation on your concern, if I may.
Yeah.
So part of the reason it takes up so much time is because we ask questions and staff responds, and that's what chews up time. If we have our go backs to two minutes and board members can choose to ask staff within their two minutes, or we just get two minutes to share with each other where we are right now, then.
Meaning that it would be total, not just your own time.
Yes. As well. Staff will be limited, but here's what we can do.
But again.
What Ms. McLaughlin is saying is that, you know, if we each had two minutes total.
It's 20.
Meaning like, answer my questions in that two minutes as well, but that's it. And then that way, if we have, if we want to use that time for speaking or asking questions, we'd actually get more time that way. I like that, frankly.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we get down the road of everybody turning on their mics to talk, Ms. Omeish, do you want to do a pulse for us?
Yeah, I was going to say maybe we, let's separate this because I think two minutes you'll find that you're barely saying anything. If staff have to respond, just a thought. Let's first ask if folks are willing to extend, and then we can ask about the time. Okay? So let's start. Vote number one, please put your hand down if it's up. We're, option A is to stay on time right now, and we're going to fit the time it's going to require, which is probably 45 seconds. Option B is we're to extend and we determine what that is. So if you are in favor of option A to stay where we're going to end up 5:15 with 45 second go backs, raise your hand. Okay, so that is five. Please lower your hands. If you are in favor of option B to extend for an undetermined amount.
No, no, until 5:45. We're extending until 5:45. That's an option.
You suggested different time options. So if this passes, we're going to move forward to deciding between those options.
No, Ms. Omeish, it was two different end times. One was 5:15, one was 5:45. How we then spend the time is the second vote. This is supposed to be end at 5:45. A lot of us have public meetings or doctor's appointments.
Yeah. So based on your suggestion, I left it undetermined, and we will vote on that part after this as to whether it's.
My suggestion fits within 5:45. It fits within 5:45, two minutes.
We can talk about this aspect of it until 5:45 if we want.
Based on the hands, we actually have to stay until 5:15, it seems. We have only three hands up right now, and I saw four, I think. So the majority has.
Ms. Omeish, I was talking to you rather getting clarity. If I'm voting for the other one, is anybody else voting one way or the other?
So either way, folks are voting right now in the majority to end at 5:15. So I don't, I would.
Pointing the clarification, I was waiting for the two minute overall to vote on because that's the reason I haven't voted. So when do we vote now?
Over. Everybody lower your hands. We've got to do this quickly because otherwise it defeats the purpose. We have option A, we're going to stay on time until 5:15 at 45 seconds per member. We have option B at this point, it's 90 seconds, and we're going to end at 5:45. Okay? So option A, if you are in favor of ending at 5:15 with 45 seconds, please raise your hand. All right, that is a majority. So we are going to be 45 second go backs with ending at 5:15 hopefully. Clerks, please take note, and we will limit staff to the same amount of time. So with that, we will, Mr. Frisch, I believe you will offer your first, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we'll just jump right in. I have a very macro question to kind of get us going, and I'd be interested in hearing from anybody on staff. Marty or, or sorry, Mr. Smith or Dr. Brabrand or whomever would like to respond. During this long process, I'm curious what you might have learned that you would maybe do differently as a result of what's happened? And, you know, what you might do differently if you had an opportunity to do this all over again.
Wow. 45 seconds for that response.
There's 10.
I wanted to change the focus on equity. I would have liked more time, time for the board, time with the community. And we're out of time to affect the admissions process for this year. We need to come up with something that's better, that is more equitable, and that's what we brought you today. More time and time without COVID, which we didn't have the luxury of this hit. The admissions data hit right as COVID hit. More time.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I would say outreach to the board sooner as part of the process and more opportunities for engagement with our stakeholders. And certainly we'll use some of this, a lot of these lessons learned as we think about making improvements and enhancements in the future.
Anybody else want to chime in? All right. I asked that question because, you know, as difficult as it is, every day is an opportunity to do something differently and to do something the way we want to do it, right? And so as I think about this, you know, one of the things that concerns me, I think Dr. Brabrand, you said, you know, we don't want anybody having this mentality of I'm not welcome there, right? As we think about, how do we get people to open that door partways so that we can meet them and invite them in to the application process? I'm concerned about a two tiered process where even if we're not saying, we know that, you know, that students don't know which group they're in, you're going to have, and I think our principal indicated that this is going to happen regardless, but you're going to have a population of people who are who are seen as not being as deserving to be there. And I'd be interested in digging a little bit deeper on that front and what can be done if that is the option that goes forward to minimize that. Because it's not a matter of people knowing whether or not they're on which side of the ledger they're on. There's going to, people are going to know that there is a line to be on a side of. And so how do we combat that?
I don't know where we are on seconds. It is school leadership and what I think Ms. Bonatavas said that's powerful. Even with no tiers right now, our students still do it. Students still say, how did you get here? How did you get in? So I think that is part of the culture of working with students and staff to really talk about the kind of environment and caring culture that we have and can even enhance at TJ.
And I would just add that, and we go out to the students, we ask the students how we do this. You know, as we think about staff, we think about principals and teachers, and we very clearly have to engage with students and talk about this to get a better handle on.
I know that's not my time. This was my first round. I see that. I was just being text to find out if I was, this is my first round.
That wasn't for you. That was for staff.
I'm sorry. I apologize for not responding sooner. On the recruitment front, you know, this is still something that concerns me a great deal. I want to be clear that when we talk about iterating out all of the different things that we're going to do to amp up our recruitment efforts, recruitment being like to the application process, that we are going to be following best practices and not just checking a box off of the many lists of things that we're going to be doing. So for example, sending recruitment emails and letters to all eligible students. Are we going to be designing these mailers? First of all, is that an either or or is that a yes and?
That's a yes and.
Are we going to be designing these mailers, these physical mailers to cut through the clutter? Or is it going to look like a letter from FCPS? A nondescript envelope that looks like anything else they get from FCPS? Have we thought about that?
It would very clearly look like something from TJ Office of Admissions inviting you into the process. I'm not.
Because if you're a parent who's never heard of TJ, why would you open that envelope? So what I'm getting at is we need to think about each one of these elements. And I'm very appreciative of the thought that's gone into how we're really going to turn up the application process. But we need to take each one of these nuggets in isolation and think, what is the thing that's actually going to get us in front of the eyeballs that we need to connect with in a way that is impactful versus is just a mailer? I guess that is my time now, right?
And Mr. Frisch, one of my answers to something Ms. Keys-Gamar said, that is absolutely something I would put in front of our chief equity officer, Dr. Williams, to really talk about because you're talking about even the first outreach is its own message, right? It's the, even how it comes is the first signal as to whether you should apply or this is not important. Keep going. So we bring our equity team, we involve our stakeholders, MSAOC, our culturally responsive team and Dr. Williams to really say, let's make sure we do the outreach with a full equity lens. And I think Mr. Smith already has a meeting with Dr. Williams set up to do this very thing.
Well, I ended at the end of my sentence when the bell went, so I don't get to muscle.
You can kind of go back later.
Continue. Thank you.
Okay, so at 45 seconds, we'll start with Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, you can get started. Real quick, Dr. Brabrand, I appreciate what you said about time respectfully, as you know. I feel like you put this on us. The state didn't require us to do this amount before its filing in October. You told us we had to pretty much dismantle the way we do TJ admissions and reconstruct it again. I don't think it's responsible. I think the board is having to now come in with stakeholders and try and fix a lot of changes that are too many in one year. They're not provided by how we do best practices at elite universities. And I'm sorry, I'm sitting here in 45 seconds trying to set this up. I appreciate your dedication, Dr. Brabrand, but very disappointed that you and your team put us in this situation. I don't think we should have had to be here, and I look forward to solving it with the board.
Ms. Keys-Gamar?
Okay, I'm going to use my time to ask our principal from TJ to give us her comments on these teacher recommendations. Is she available?
And do you want to speak to that?
Sure. You'd like me to go back and just add on to my comments about teacher recommendations?
Yeah, I, you know, I have, am of the opinion that it can be problematic in a number of ways. And I think that we've heard from a number of our board members who want to see that reinstated. And I wanted to get your full comments on that.
Sure. I think we need to recognize that there are inherent biases to any kind of admissions process, and we need to mitigate that to the greatest degree possible. And if there is a sentiment on behalf of the board of reinstating teacher recommendations, I would, I would actually appeal to the board to think about what we mean when we say recommendations. It goes back to my earlier comment about some narratives and perceptions and mythologies about a student having to be at one level to be quote, ready for TJ versus being at a level that is ready for growth. And so some of the teacher recommendations sometimes are saying that a teacher is able to see a child ready for TJ. No middle school teacher can say if a child is ready for TJ. What a teacher can say and talk to is a child's potential for growth, their love for STEM, and what they are as a learner. And potentially may we use some of these recommendations and to go to a board earlier point. They can be used to help identify students for other very special programs.
Sorry, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Just a reminder, folks who are not speaking, please mute yourselves. There are a couple of folks with feedback. Go ahead, Ms. Keys-Gamar.
So as a next step, I think we need to take a deeper dive into that because I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot trying to figure out how to stay close to where we have been. We've done that for 20 years and it hasn't been very productive. I also just want to agree with Mr. Smith, where I think it was Mr. Smith that was talking about how students feel about applying. I can tell you anecdotally, my sons were recommended to want to go to TJ. And given the reputation it has for isolating students of color, they simply did not want to go. And so we do need to get more definitive information, but we also need to realize there's a whole culture we need to change, and that's part of the reason we need to make some significant changes rather than small check in the boxes or, I don't mean to say that. I'm ready to take this head on. So thank you.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. Very quick. We've talked a lot about expanding opportunity. And I think we need to just stick to that, stick to that talking point. Let's expand opportunity. Let's not cloud it with additional teacher recommendations which don't speak to student readiness. It's just yet another obstacle that has bias that we have been struggling with for so long. Let's go ahead and focus on the merit lottery, which has been used successfully in many, many top high schools. Let's go ahead and have the pathway be based by school or by pyramid because we want to expand opportunity. Let's continue the work. Yes, we have pipeline work to do. We have recruitment to do. But I believe that this work that we, that's before us right now, it's way overdue. The timing honestly for me is never going to be right, but it's already overdue. So I am fine with handling it in this moment. Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
I, I just, I just have to say, if we are arguing that teacher recs have implicit bias, we have a much bigger problem than TJ because we use teacher recommendations for Level 4 AP. We use teacher recommendations for scholarships. We use them for college applications. We use them for all kinds of things. So I'm deeply concerned if we think we have a big issue with teachers having implicit bias. That speaks to me and need to come back and talk to our teachers about how to remedy that and how to structure a recommendation process or letter for TJ that works to remove that and gives exactly what Dr. Bonatavas said about embracing a love for STEM. I'm really having trouble with this piece of it and the response to it.
Were you looking for a response, Ms. Cohen?
I, I recognize that was more of a 45 second pontification. So if people want to, they're more than. I, I recognize that was more of a forty-five second pontification. So if people want to, they're more than welcome to.
All right, Ms. Tolan.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, for that pontification. You saved me a few seconds. I agree with you wholeheartedly. A couple of other quick questions I'll just throw in. I put into the next steps, I'm curious about how. Any new process that we're implementing now will impact our sophomore transfer. Process. So that will be something I'd like to get some information on because we've got that whole set of students to look at as well. I want to again say that probably implementing this will impact. Our base high schools or a couple of our more crowded high schools in particular. So we also need to be cognizant of the types of advanced science and math programs those schools are going to need to offer. And that we should be offering probably more generally. I just want to know what the application process timeline might be. So, you know, I think we need to get that out ASAP. Thank you.
If staff want to address the timeline question?
Mr. Smith?
I was going to ask Jeremy to talk about that. We've talked about certain things that have to happen at certain intervals, so.
So. Timeline, in terms of timeline perspective. We have to consider how long each of these elements are going to last. And that's part of the reason why the timeline that's been put forward is there. We know that we're looking to seat a class. Depending upon how late you want to be able to seat the class for next fall will be, will be dependent upon how late. We can start in addition to whether or not we're adding elements to the current processes that were proposed. How long of an application window? When they complete each of these things, if teacher recommendations are included, how long do we allow teachers? To be able to write these recommendations? And so each of these elements add in time on top of the length of time that we're going to need. I'm sorry, let me just finish that statement. How long we're going to need to be able to do an evaluation, which in previous years was probably about a thousand to fifteen hundred students to now what may be. In excess of three thousand to four thousand and maybe even beyond that students in an application cycle. Each of those elements have to be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. Real quick. This is, neither one of these approaches is an incremental change. Both are a dramatic overhaul in the approach to how we are looking at admissions for TJ. Just want to make that clear. I do think that a measured, not a measured, but an approach that focuses on school by school and region. Is a great movement. I do want to very quickly say on recommendations, why do we limit recommendations to just teachers? There are some students who may have. Incredible relationships with people who understand their thirst for knowledge, their thirst for science experiences. That may not be a teacher in their school. For example, it may be a mentor in the community who's a doctor or scientist or a engineer. And so I just would say that if we're looking at recommendations, expand it beyond.
Ms. Bukarsky.
Yeah, thank you. Going back to what Mr. Fresh said about. Notification to students about TJ and this option, you know. For students to see themselves as a future TJ student, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't start in eighth grade or in seventh grade. That starts well before that and understanding that this opportunity is there for them and that this is a passion they can cultivate. And that is an option for them. So hopefully, you know, we will begin some of that work well before these students are in eighth grade. I would also like to say that our teacher recommendations are a data point. An opportunity for us to learn more about students. It can be very regulated. It could be. And provide valuable information. Thank you.
Mr. Arnaud Kofax.
Sorry. Waiting for my video. All right. I had stated what I said before. That TJ, just as my colleague said, the data point about teachers. TJ is but one data point. There are so many systemic issues that need to be addressed. And I feel there's been a little bit of a lack of public engagement on this topic, no public hearing. I feel we're a little torn. We're going to be needing to make. Decision based upon time as of next week. So I may be talking to my colleagues about. Making this opportunity a pilot this year and then deciding to look at it again because we know there'll be also recommendations coming from the state. So I have to think about that if I'm going to do that, but I will engage in conversations because I think it's important that we. Get this right.
Ms. Sazmohizer.
Thank you. So I agree with what my colleague, Ms. Arnaud Kofax, just said that, and I think Ms. Corbett Sanders, these are major changes we're making. And I want to flag that we are removing the test. We have removed the test, regional pathways, whether it's a minimum or maximum. Those are huge changes, plus the student experience factors. These are massive changes. I think we need to see what these changes are doing before. Saying, you know, these aren't sort of big changes. A lack of a test can actually be negative for students with disabilities. As I pointed out in issues of the problem solving essay and IEP accommodations weren't developed with the notion of what students with disabilities need on this essay. So I'm not sure that's fully appropriate or sufficient. So, you know, I think these are major changes we're making and I think we need to do it intentionally, which I think a holistic review gets us to. I am very concerned what I've seen for other schools with lotteries and the retention issues, you know, I'm very focused on student success at TJ, not just admissions to TJ. That's the overall goal. We need to view passions and rhetoric that create a lot of divisiveness on TJ and I think moving forward as a system, we need to be intentional about healing that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Marin.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly as Dr. Anderson put it about, you know, we're going to try this. Let's try if the work is now. Rachna, Ms. Sazmohizer just said, you know, they are big changes. I agree. I think earlier I misspoke when I was saying that this is like, you know, other schools that where their selection or division, when I was trying to get it is. Others of our schools use lotteries and I know that it's different with TJ, but. I do think the sentiment I've heard some of my colleagues say is. Let's try something and we have a lot of really hard thinking that's gone into this. And we certainly can adjust things, but it is time to do it and I think the board can make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh.
Thanks. So I would get back to the questioning about, and I've already lost fifteen seconds. About the process that we're going to be reaching out to folks with. What assurances can we, can we give the community that it's going to be more than? What's listed on the page when we think about this, that we're going to incorporate the best practices from the discipline? Of finding people, of seeking people out for admissions beyond just a letter, beyond just an email, beyond just. You know, some, some basic outreach. How are we going to amp it up more than what's written on the page?
So, so I think it's engaging with, as, as I said earlier, our stakeholders to find out which ways they would best like to be communicated with. Of course, working with our communications team and working with our equity team to. To try to figure out the best way to provide new information for students and families that just isn't the same old. Letter from Fairfax. So, and that's what I have right now. I don't have all the answers to that, to that question, but I can tell you. Based on the questions that are being asked that it will not be just the same old, same old.
I mean, given that it's the, potentially the first year that this happens, it might be worth doing some testing. As we roll this out to see what, what types of outreach and what, what shape of outreach within those types. Perform best in terms of responses. Right? Question mark?
I was just looking at the time, but no, certainly we can, I, I think it's really thinking about what goes through the mind of an eighth grader and an eighth grader's parents. To help engage them better in the process. So we can certainly do some of that work.
Great. I'm last, so here I begin. Does anything preclude us from doing the outreach like we do with AAP to screen gifted students? Meaning that universal screening with local testing in base schools?
Timing wise, yes, for this year. I think that there are certainly options that we could look at in the future. As we think about just overall kinds of approaches to using an instrument that isn't solely focused on TJ, but might be so focused on. Giving us information about students and students' potential in a variety of different areas.
Okay, yeah, seeing that this universal screening piece for the future is not reflected as well as the thresholds by school rather than by region, localizing outreach. Haven't been reflected. I just want to remind my colleagues that I do have two motions ready for the seventeenth. I've shared these with you guys. And look forward to hearing your, your thinking around it and answering any questions. About whether or not we could support. I know I've heard quite a number of folks today who have expressed. Support or thoughts in that direction and I hope I can have your support on the seventeenth. With that. That does conclude this portion of our meeting. If everyone can take a look at the next steps. We're going to be doing this in the way we have done before where if. There are no objections by staff or colleagues. We will move forward with the next step. So if folks can take a look at the document. And anyone who has any objections to anything, please raise your hand. Dr. Braber, and go ahead.
No, I'm just looking. Is it going to be posted or should I just go into the Google document myself like other board members do?
You should go into the Google doc.
Okay.
But just to remind people that it's set up the same way that we used most recently. So you should enter your own next steps and in the column with your name. You should register your approval or your support or opposition to the next step. So that we're registering our opinions that way rather than doing it one by one by one.
And, and what I would, I would like to just thank the board and, and the TJ team that. Spent time putting all this information together today for your discussion. I really do appreciate all their hard work and. And, and then we'll, we'll listen now and reflect on the next steps you have presented. Thank you.
And Dr. Braber, and I failed to mention folks in my office, in my direct office, Julie Fowler and Tracy Scan, who have been instrumental in this process as well. Along with all of those others that I shared at the beginning of my comments.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, I see your hand before we wrap up. Go ahead.
Yes, I thought I had read that we would have time after this work session. To, one, make sure we've got our next steps captured and number two, that we would. Rate that we're green lighting these next steps. I didn't know we're sitting here doing it now and what, the next five minutes? So.
In the, in the two emails that went out about the meeting, it did talk about how we would do next steps as we've previously done in the meeting. Which would be that we enter our next steps throughout the meeting or within the twenty-four hours following the meeting. And then in the column, the next steps, we have an opportunity to wave it, wave, weigh in to each of them.
Exactly right, Mr. Fresh. That's the clarity I wanted is I'd read it that we would have up to twenty-four hours. I was given the impression we're doing it right now.
You can do it right now. Then you don't have to worry about it.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if people are filling it out right now. And someone adds a next step, how will they know to go back?
They can go back to, within, you know, I would encourage people to check back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's just what I wanted to check is should we remind everybody that even if they fill this out now, they should check back in case their colleagues have added anything within that far window?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Sazmohizer?
Very briefly, I would maybe encourage our colleagues since we're all so busy. If you do.
Uh-oh, the robots have got her.
Ms. Sazmohizer?
Yes.
We totally missed what you said though, so we might want to do it again. Go ahead.
All I was saying was just briefly, if folks do add a next step after tonight, it would be helpful at least to me if someone either sent a text message or an email. So we would know that there's a next step. So we're not just constantly checking. Just a suggestion.
Okay. I think there are no more hands. So with that, folks, at five oh five, we will be adjourning this meeting. Thank you for your participation. Have a good afternoon. Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for everything.
Thanks.